I now call the June 14th meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Welcome to the many of you in the back of the room. We've got a bigger crowd today than we did yesterday. And welcome to everyone who's listening online. All board members are present and seated. Are there any changes to today's agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Betty, Dina, all in favor, raise your hand. Posed, looks unanimous. Motion passes. I would like to welcome Dr. Ben Proctor this morning to cover school improvement and KISA. Good morning.
With the state board. Appreciate the opportunity as always, but I'm especially excited today. I was thinking back, it's been a lot of years since I was a teacher. And when I was a teacher, I was also a coach. And I remember the feeling of game day. And the excitement and nervousness and all those things that I would experience on the days that we would play games and and ultimately get to practice in a game situation, all the things that we had been working on. I feel a similar feeling today and a lot of our group here, Madam Chair is with me. And they're going to share with you as part of this presentation and discussion today. The words that come to mind as I think about what we're going to talk to you about, or the phrase is, is a work in progress. I feel like as a team, we're a work in progress. When I think about the work, it's in progress. But I think it's very exciting and you won't hear anything that is new. Or we won't describe anything that we're talking about today as an initiative or something that is foreign to educators and to systems across our state. But we're going to talk about it in a little bit different context. And we have a number of people who will share from their perspective. But I would like, and I know it's hard to see with with our pillars and everything, but I would like the folks who are involved in our school improvement work group to stand. And just so you can see the folks that have been a part of this work. And it'll be described to you. Thank you very much. Good, good sized group and they're around the corners as well. It'll be described to you by members of our team as we kind of go through our sequence today. I think the other thing, just as a lead in that I want to share is that I feel well positioned for this work because of the work that has been done prior. There's been so many amazing efforts. I think about when Dr. Watson came in as commissioner and and set a course for our state and the state board's work that has positioned us for continued good work. And I feel like you're going to hear more about that today and we encourage you to think of questions and and comments that you'll have. And we want to get through all the things that we want to talk about and make sure we have plenty of time at the end for that. But I'm going to welcome Denise Kayler to start things off and talk a little bit about an important starting point, which is our vision in Kansas.
Board members, as she approaches the podium, you have a handout. I just want to point out that this will be a longer presentation than we normally hear and you have sections so you can take notes here. And we'll do all the questions towards the end after the presenters have had an opportunity to speak. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I have the privilege of kind of teeing up our conversation today. So eight years ago, the board, State Board of Education launched a very bold vision for Kansas education. That Kansas leads the world in the success of each student. That vision has significantly changed our understanding of and our approach toward what students need in order to be successful. So when we rolled out this new vision way back when, we likened it to Kennedy's moonshot. And why did we do that? Because maybe one of the greatest lessons that we learned from that significant moment in history is that in order to move something forward of that magnitude, you had to have two things. First, everyone has to understand what the charge is. They have to understand it. And second, everyone has to see themselves regardless of their position in that work that needs to be done. So one of the things that Commissioner Watson would reference, he would always reference a story about the NASA custodian who when asked what his role was in the agency said, "I'm helping to put a man on the moon." Because he understood that his work contributed to that overall vision. So today, the members of the School Improvement Work Group are going to be talking to you about what they believe to be the next critical step in moving your vision forward. And as you're listening to their presentations, we'd like for you to be thinking about how all of this aligns with the board outcomes that were established eight years ago and the board goals that you all just adopted. So we look forward to your questions and we welcome your insights that will help us move this work forward. Thank you.
Thank you Denise. And as, as part of the premise behind the work, so you'll hear a lot about kind of this idea of we're a work in progress and and we're, we're working to take the time that we need to, to do the work right. But the premise is, is well established. And that is, we believe that all of this, the design is to ultimately serve the kids in Kansas and to do our very best work for them and achieve the outcomes that we know are so critical for them. And a starting point, I've been here, I'm almost at my year mark here at the agency and it's been an amazing experience. And I started off by just acknowledging early on the just amazing work that people do and the teams that we have here. And with our director team specifically, our starting point became, how do we start to address what, what we feel like could be the challenges that we have? And part of the challenges that we identified, or the challenge that we identified is just making sure that everybody is working together in the same direction. We know that we're doing everything we can to serve kids and to do what's best for kids, but how do we as a, as a department, how do we work together to make sure we're moving in the same direction related to how we serve kids and and systems across the state? So we started with a framework and actually did a book study by Michael Follin. And the title of the book, the book is coherence. And back to the title slide, you'll notice that we settled on coherence building or building coherence as kind of the the underlying premise of our presentation today. We want to get everybody on the same page. And when I say everybody, you'll hear us talk about, we mean everybody. Everybody who serves kids in Kansas. And so using this framework, we, we started with, with where, where do we want to go? How do we focus direction? How do we talk about teaching and learning in Kansas? And what does that mean? And how do we start to take what can be separation points in our department and certainly across the state? Where we're asking people to do a lot of things. We do a lot of things in schools. How do we start to focus on a smaller number of things that we want to do very, very well? And that became kind of the, the underlying theme of our initial work, especially with our directors in the Division of Learning Services. That's the first part of that framework. How do we start to focus direction? Then how do we start to, to build a more collaborative culture? So that we're not just talking about the work that we do, but how the work intersects with one another? How does the work that one part of our department, how does that work align with the work of other parts? And we did a, an early survey in the Division of Learning Services, and I say early, about a year ago in, in the fall. And one of the themes that came from that, we asked everybody in our division questions about just the, the nature of our work. And one of the themes was that we don't always know what everybody else is doing or how our work aligns with their work. And that's very common. I think you'll always see that to some degree in organizations and there's probably natural elements of that that are going to exist just based on what we do. But we wanted to start to bridge that. And we feel like the, the second part of this framework that we're utilizing is really talking about collaboration. So how do we talk together about the work? And not just update individuals on the work that we're doing. And that helps us to start align what we do, especially as we think about a specific direction that we want to go. A third part of the framework is deepen learning and really talking about teaching and learning. That, that's one of my favorite subjects. I, I love talking about the classroom dynamic and understanding what happens in classrooms. And we'll talk in a little bit about this idea of just quality instruction and what teachers bring to a classroom that is so critical that often you can't measure, but is impactful on kids. And again, going back to that idea that everything that we're doing here is about how we maximize impact on kids and provide the best opportunities for them. And then the final part of that framework is about accountability. And Follin goes into the importance of both internal and external accountability. How we hold ourselves accountable for the work and take ownership of that. And also how we extend that accountability externally so that systems know what we're asking them to do. Clarity is key and we've been referring to a lot of different authors who understand system work. And the importance, especially at a state level, being very clear about what we're expecting. And we feel like a big part of our message today is that we're finding that clarity. And we want to move that forward on, on a few areas that, that Follin talks about. He, he references in this book that oftentimes we just ask too many things of people. We ask people to do too many things. They can feel disconnected from one another. We're trying to bring those connections together. So utilize this as a reference point for our team and I think it served us very well.
Morning, members of the board. I'm Doug Goleena, Assistant Director on the Special Education and Title Services Team. And I'm joined by my colleague, Dr. Michelle Hayes. She is the Transitioning Director of the Kansas Learning Network. And she is on her way to becoming the co-director of the TAZEN Coordination Group. So kind of give you a background of how we started on, on some of these things before Dr. Proctor came. As part of our federal accountability work, KSDE, with the help of KLN, the Kansas Learning Network, we belong to a couple of different collaboratives of states. One of those is the National Center for Systemic Improvement, which is the Lowest Performing School Systems Group. And then we're also part of CCSSO's School and District Improvement Group. And so being a member of these two organizations gives us a chance to talk to other states and see how they're supporting their lower performing schools and then gives us the opportunity to kind of reflect on our own practices. And so Michelle and I are in contact quite a bit during the year as, as KLN works with the, the different schools. But going to these meetings gives us a chance to really dig deep into the weeds as to what we're doing, what we think's successful. Where do we see shortcomings? What are the things that we could improve on in, in supporting schools? And so it was during one of those discussions, a little over a year ago, when we were at one of these meetings, that we started thinking about, well, how can we be better as we gear up for the next upcoming school year? What are the things that we can improve on? And as we talk more about it and we listen to other states, how they're organized, one of the things that came up for us is we could do a whole lot better job if we were more coordinated with the other teams across the Division of Learning Services. Because there are experts across our agency in our division that have the expertise to help those buildings that are, that are low performing. So one of the first things that came up was, well, who better on our team to address curriculum and standards than our program managers that we already have? Why aren't we pulling them into the discussion? Who better to address state assessments and data within the building so that they know what they're looking for and know what they're seeing when they look at their own data? Well, that's our assessment team and our research team. Why aren't we bringing them into the fold?
Yeah, so I'm in a unique position in which I get to work directly with the Department of Education. And then additionally, I'm working closely with district and school leaders. And so I'm able to hear ongoingly about the sense that they're making of different initiatives or requirements. And so anything to do with, with school improvement, I'm able to, to uncover misinterpretations, possible gaps in understanding and the ways in which we can ongoingly influence that. And so what I was finding is ongoingly, any school improvement work, anything encompassing of improving at the local level, including KISA with accreditation, was being seen as competing initiatives rather than complimentary work that you do to meet overall outcomes. And so as I had conversations with Doug and then we began to pull a group together at the, at the agency to talk about, you know, if, if there are things that we are doing to support schools that are good for, for schools that are being identified as in need of additional support, they're really lower performing, in what ways might that be good for all schools? And so, you know, the goal is to really narrow focus and we want to reduce limitations. And so we started to think about, well, are there some fundamental elements that we would utilize to support schools in improving? So we brought a group together at the table and originally that included members of the Career Standards and Assessments Team, as Doug was mentioning, the program managers and members that oversee assessment. And then we brought together folks from the Special Education and Title Services Team, including Doug and, and others. And we began to really just share about our work initially. The areas that we have a focus, things that we are doing to, to support. And started to consider, well, in what ways might we align this? And clarify messaging so that it's not seen as competing and more people understand how the work is complimentary to improve overall outcomes. So initially, our group was only 10 people. And then as, as we've really started to think about narrowing in on fundamental elements that are important for each and every learner, then the group has grown to approximately 35 people.
And you can see a list of everybody on this slide.
Thank you Doug and Michelle. So that's a large group. If you've, if you've ever worked, I will say as an aside, we had close to 25, 30 people build a unified PowerPoint, which is a, a unique challenge, but shows the, I think the point that we were at with that group as we've worked together. We've met every two weeks really to progress through that work. And we're at a point where I feel like we're, we're on the same page and bringing that number of people together to get on the same page is, it's it's a reflection of the, just the quality professionals that we have here within the agency. So going back to, to again, kind of being grounded in a framework that, that gives us a starting point to have good conversation about the work. We, we did spend time saying, what, where are we going? What is the direction? What are the results that we're getting? And if you think back to the fall, Dr. Watson has shared a number of times some correlation data that we felt like was pretty compelling. And it was a look at state assessment results. And how do students who perform at a certain level end up doing in terms of graduation, meeting post-secondary effectiveness and some other relevant measures? And we identified at that time in our team, and I think, you know, as I've visited with different groups, we get a chance to go out and, and talk about our work with, with various groups that work in schools. We, we really started referencing this idea of, do we have students that have too many limitations? Is academics a limitation? Are the other skills and qualities that we want our students to have, are they limiting opportunities? And a premise, as we think about our vision in Kansas, that, that I think our, our team really latched on to is we want to maximize opportunities for kids. We don't want to get in the way of that. We want to elevate those opportunities and, and take away as many limitations as possible. That's the big idea. That's all we want. And again, that goes back to this idea that, that we're just, we want to do the very best work that we can for our students in Kansas. So we used some data, we started talking about the, the idea of let's, let's, let's see, how does our work unify around each other? So that we can best serve kids. And that's where this idea is Michelle introduced. This idea of fundamentals. I've always loved that concept of fundamentals. What's fundamental to every system? What does every child and every school system need to experience? That's, that's universally true. And we feel like what we're going to present to you are those things that while there's many things that schools have to account for, we feel like if you do these things well, then we're going to serve our, our kids in the very best way possible. So that really became our, our, the, the way that we address that direction that we want to move and give us something to collaborate on. As part of that, and again, kind of framing the, the work within that framework, we want to learn more about that. So if we identify specific things that we want to do, let's talk about them. We want to make sure that it's grounded in research. So we have a basis for that. It's not just my opinion that we're basing this work on, but, but what do we know about quality school systems? What does the research say about that? And we have experts in that, as, as you've heard, you know, over the months from different parts of our division, people who have expertise in these areas, but we want to make sure that we feel like they're, they're grounded in research and if we do them well, that we'll see the impact that we want to see. We also talk a lot about our capacity. How do we support systems? I think the, a, a common theme throughout all of our discussions is ultimately being able to support the work. And not just telling people what we think they should do, but being able to utilize supports that are available, knowing that we have limited capacity. You know, we can't, Dr. Lori Curtis cannot serve the entire state, each system on how to, to integrate the, the elements of structured literacy. There, we have to build capacity to do that. But we've got a starting point and we feel like we can take the lead on that work as we start to leverage supports across the state. And we've got great people to do that work across the state. But I think they have to hear clearly what it is that we're trying to achieve. And then we want to know that if, if we do this, do we feel very confident that if we do this well, that ultimately that's going to have the positive impact on kids that we believe has to be present? And ultimately, it all comes back to that. Teachers matter. And if you spend any time in schools and you walk into a classroom and you see a teacher who is just nailing it, doing everything well, that's an invaluable thing that we have in our society. And we want to see that replicated over and over and over. And we feel like this work is really elevating the, the, the qualities of a great teacher that we want to see and that every child deserves. And we have so many in Kansas. And we want to make sure that we're being a support to that. But ultimately, that's where the impact lies in those great teachers in classrooms across state. And that's really what this work is all about.
Good morning. I'm Lori Curtis, the Program Manager for Early Literacy and Dyslexia. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about structured literacy. We've talked about this in earlier board meetings. But I do want to tell you, these four fundamentals you're going to hear about are so connected to the art and science of teaching. I'm excited about what you're going to get to hear today. And as far as structured literacy goes, we know we provide students with literacy instruction that's aligned to the science of reading. That every school will be committed to teaching children to read, not just by third grade, but all throughout their schooling through graduation. We will provide intentional support to make sure our teachers are well trained and knowledgeable in the elements of structured literacy. And what I love about the idea of structured literacy, it isn't just what you teach, but how how you teach it. So it does really embrace that art of teaching. And then also, just that understanding that literacy changes lives and increased literacy achievement is going to unlock opportunities for our students to reach their potential.
I'm Julie Ewing, Assistant Director for Assessments. And I'm going to ask you a question, but I want you to answer it silently. What's the first thing you think of when you hear the word "assessment"? You may think of the state assessments, spelling test, a pop quiz, a chapter test, a research paper, and some may think, waste of time. We spend a lot of time at the state level talking about state assessments, which are an important tool. But focusing solely on one assessment doesn't give us an entire picture of what a student knows and can do. Good teachers are focused on quality instruction that is aligned to the state standards, and they use a variety of assessments to measure a student's learning. Assessing for learning could be as quick as a thumbs up response to a question or a comprehensive test given at the end of a unit. Having a balanced assessment system means that each district, each school, and each teacher has a deep understanding of the purpose of what each test measures and how to use the data from that test to move learning forward for each student. We want to be able to assess a student's learning in a variety of ways and use the data to adjust instruction, interventions, and practices. This means not relying too heavily on any single data point to determine student and system's success, but instead using a variety of data points that a balanced assessment system provides as a bigger picture to inform decision-making and instruction. A balanced assessment system is a collection of assessments that work together to provide varying types of feedback about instruction and student learning based on our state assessments. So understanding the data and using the data correctly to adjust instruction unlocks opportunities for all students. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Meg Richard, and I am the Education Program Manager for STEM. And when I heard Denise open, I was transported back to my seventh grade classroom, where we would show the clip and listen to Kennedy say, "We choose to go to the moon and do these other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard." And then there was this like empowerment moment. This is no surprise to you, but our standards are rigorous. But we believe that our standards are what every student in the state of Kansas should know and be able to do. And we hold that it is essential for them to do these things. Standards alignment incorporates both our academic standards and our non-academic standards. We are committed to providing access to these and supporting our educational systems and making sure that every student has the opportunity to do these things and other things.
So the the fourth fundamental is quality instruction. These are not in order, but when we think about teaching children to read through structured literacy, and we think about utilizing data through a more balanced assessment system and making sure that every system is equipped to know what to do with that data and to be able to ask good questions and target instruction based on that. And then to be able to identify, what is it that we want our kids to know and be able to do as we think about those standards? And like Meg said, there's, there's many, but it boils down to that. Do we have guarantees in in each system around what we expect kids to know and be able to do? And those are both academically and non-academically. Those are great community conversations. We feel like those are essential in every system, and it really ties together through quality instruction and what happens in that classroom as our as our kids experience teachers and and leaders within that school system. And we feel like, I guess this would just be my impression, but I don't know that we talk about just quality instruction enough. And I love talking about it. I love talking about it with with superintendents and and people who generally don't always think in those terms. And I had a chance to to visit with our new superintendent yesterday. They're in town and going through a great orientation. There's many, as you know. We've seen a good number turn over over the last several years. And they're very eager and anxious and thinking about all the things that are upcoming for them with with new board meetings. And I just asked, where does instructional leadership situate in all those things that you're thinking about right now? And I wasn't, I didn't have a lot of time, and I tend to go over time. So I didn't want to spend a lot of time with responses, just think about that. But actually, a friend of mine, who's a new superintendent, said, you know, I haven't, I haven't thought about that. You know, and I think it's because that's not always our starting point. But I believe that in a lot of ways, it should be. And we need to think about what is happening in our classrooms and how we set the tone for quality instruction. And I love thinking about the art and science of teaching. And there is an art to it. And if you see it done well, you see an artist in action. You know, and you think about going back and tying these things together, you know, having the training and the confidence to be able to say, I know how to teach every child who is capable to read. And I know exactly what I want my kids to know and be able to do because I understand standards. And we've equipped systems with the ability to take what can be very complex and feel overwhelming, but we've, we've created tools and resources to be able to take those things and 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 develop a process that can work in systems to move that to the classroom level that's supportive of teachers. And all of our data, we often hear things about assessment data. We don't know how to utilize that in the best way, or we don't know the purpose of this particular assessment. That's where we feel like this work is very important. We want to be able to resource and equip systems to be able to do these things very well and always talk about what quality instructional elements look like. And there's, there's good research on what works well in classrooms. And we want to embrace that and talk about expectations and the little things that that we often don't spend time talking about. I've shared with superintendents that if I were to go back into that role and I were to take advantage of an opportunity early in a school year, I would talk about the first day of school and how important setting a tone for that first day is for every teacher on high expectations. And here's what you're going to learn and you're going to know and you're going to be able to do in my classroom. So we want to talk more about that and elevate instruction as as so critical and and how it ties in. And there's an interconnectedness to these other fundamentals. But we feel like they're, they're what will bring everything else out in a better way. You know, you, you create these, you get really good at these things, and innovation works better. And things that you want to build on, everything works better. So fundamentals, what's fundamental in every system? We believe we need to teach every child to read who is capable of doing so, and we think we know how to do that. And we just want to make sure that every system is equipped to be able to do that most effectively. We want them to be able to use data in the most effective way to adjust instruction. It doesn't happen by passing the law. You know, we talked about that yesterday. There's a law that says you have to provide interventions. Well, there's an art to providing that. And there's resources that have to be included in that, and they have to be high quality. And we want to be able to provide that type of support. And we want to make sure that everybody understands what to do with standards and and decides what do we want our kids to know and be able to do? And we want to elevate the art of teaching and all those things that go into building relationships with kids. If you don't have that, I don't know how you engage students. Because the relationship is always built on the fact that you want to challenge them and challenge them to learn and to grow in everything they do in that classroom. So we, we believe these are fundamentals that should be a part of every system that we can support, that are grounded in research, that will ultimately produce the results that we're seeking in Kansas for our kids, where we elevate opportunities for them, reduce limitations so they can do whatever they're they're wanting to do in life. Nothing new, by the way. So building a culture of collaboration, again, grounding our work in this framework. So we focus direction, we we deepen learning, we talk about the work together. And I think that's a, it's a challenge. Because we're talking about, again, the collective we, everybody who supports student success in our state, whether that's within school systems or the peripheral supports that we have through service centers or leadership organizations or teacher associations, whoever it is. But we want to take the lead as a, as a department on doing these things really well, knowing that systems still have to account for a lot of other things. So we want to do that through building our credibility, building trust with our partners across the state that want what's best for students. And these are some of the the individual groups and and different, you know, partners that we feel like are really critical in this process that we want to start talking about this work with. And you'll see, we start internally. We start with people across the the entire agency here at KSDE. It's been a lot of fun engaging in initial conversation across divisions, people who are in departments that are not included in the Division of Learning Services. But I, I think those are very valuable conversations to have as we go back to that idea of building coherence and making sure that we're on the same page. We feel like this exchange today is really critical and giving you a chance to ask questions and and have a better understanding of how we believe we're building our capacity to do this work. We believe engaging with school systems and 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 community partners, we feel like there has to be a better understanding in communities across Kansas of what we want our kids to know and be able to do and equipping them. And if you think about our board goals that have been established recently, how critical those partnerships are with families and community. And we want them to talk about reading and literacy. Well, and talk about standards and and data and how we all come together around things and we have a common understanding of that. That's the ultimate building of coherence, by the way, when our communities understand that, because we do this really, really well. Our service centers are key players in in school improvement. And our systems are rightfully so, very loyal to our service centers because they provide great services for leaders and teachers and professional development. And I think as, you know, we try to capture a resonating message. I do believe in our initial exchanges, as we've talked about this, not officially, but just how does this feel when we talk about fundamentals and we talk about teaching every child to read? It resonates. And people who've been around for a while and understand system improvement and what kids need, most of them will tell you and have said, this is the right work. We need to do these things really well. And it's not that they haven't been done, but we just haven't gone as deep as we want to because we we maybe sometimes ask too many things. And that can be both in a system. I can be very guilty of that as a, as a principal or a superintendent. But as a state, I think it's, it's time that we decide, if nothing else, we're going to do these things well because these are so high leverage and how we talk about that. Teachers are, as we've talked about so far, are such a key element. We want to engage our teachers in conversation so they know this is only about support and it's not about any indictment or or anything that we're not doing right. It's just, how is a state, can we take ownership of the processes to do these fundamentals well and support systems in the best way possible in higher education? That's not a group that I've been able to engage with or or just haven't taken the time yet, but I plan to do that as we go through the summer and just better understand that world and how we're preparing future educators and get more educators into programs, potential educators, so that we have more going into into education. And I've been so encouraged, just in different groups that I've been able to work with or or be a part of, that have had initial conversations about this work. And recently, I was, I was in a, it was just a small table group setting, and we were talking about what could be the positive impact of doing these things well. And the first thing, the first bullet we wrote down was teacher retention, that teachers are going to feel supported, they're going to feel competent, they're going to be well-trained and well-resourced, and that's going to, that's going to help them feel better about the work that they do. And I think about when I was a teacher and I struggled that first year, I didn't feel really good about the work I was doing. I didn't know if it was the right thing. I had some people tell me, this might not be the right thing for you. And when you start to turn that around and you start to feel really good and you know you're having an impact on kids, you know, if I taught older kids, but if I'm a, a teacher in a, in a first grade classroom and I'm seeing progress on reading and I know I'm now positioning my kids for amazing things, I start to feel really good about that. And that's what we want. We want to replicate that over and over so that teachers know that they do make an incredible difference. And that can often be lost in whirlwind of of the day-to-day and the challenges that we have. But we want to build a culture where we're talking about the work together. And it's not just, here's what you need to do, do it, do it better. We're going to show you how. And we're going to, I believe that our people can do that and create the tools and resource to be able to do that really well. So part of the first step that we want to take is just understand what is it that we ask people to do? And we want to, I call it taking stock, but there's a lot that happens in the Department of Education. We ask for a lot of information. Our people are extremely hardworking, and we just want to better understand the nature of what we're doing so we can start to identify if there are things that are misaligned or not completely aligned, if we want to go deep on these smaller number of things. And so we're starting to engage in that work right now, just taking stock of of what kind of information do we collect and ask people to provide? What are our initiatives? What are things that we would describe as initiatives or things that we're asking people to do? And it gives us a chance then to analyze that and say, is this moving us forward or is it something that we want to at least discuss and make sure is aligned? We talked to a lot of people. And I was visiting with the group the other day and just in the middle of the presentation, I'm like, we're all, we've all traveled and and I'm just wondering, is this an effective use of our time? And I don't know that we always have those internal mechanisms to know that we're maximizing our impact and that we're being very efficient. I think we want to be in a position where we can know that and take stock of of the work that we do to to know that everything that we're doing is moving us forward. We provide a lot of guidance and resources. And it's, it's always good to get feedback from from people who we're providing the guidance to to say, is this helpful to you or what could be more helpful? And I get to have exchanges with with system leaders and even yesterday, an entire administrative team about some areas that that they would say, this would provide the support in a better way than what you're providing right now for something that's really critical around the curriculum that they've chosen to utilize. So we want to take stock internally. And I'm going to let Jay talk a little bit about this idea of internal and external accountability.
Thank you, Ben. Good morning to the board. It's weird to say good morning to the board. Usually say good afternoon. So in the book Coherence, it talks about securing accountability. If you don't secure accountability, the other parts of the framework really fall apart. You've got to secure accountability. And so what is accountability? It's taking responsibility for your actions. Do any of you feel accountable every day to someone or something? Right? You take responsibility for your actions. I've been reading a book recommended to me by Dr. Doug Mekel called Multipliers. And it talks in the book about, as a leader, if you, if you want to hold yourself accountable, admit your screw-ups to your team. And it's a way to liberate your team to get to their best thinking. So this leader would actually take parts of their team meeting each week and have a screw-up portion of the meeting, or the leader would just say, I screwed up in in these things. My first thought was, man, that sounds like a good thing to do in our Accreditation and Design Team meetings. But my second thought was, we don't have enough time for me in a meeting to go through all my screw-ups. But there are, it's important to take responsibility for your actions. And so many times when people think of accountability, they think of external accountability only. The problem with that is external accountability by itself is insufficient for lasting improvement. You have to have this stronger, more important form of accountability called internal accountability. It's holding yourself accountable. It's holding the people you work with on a team accountable. And what does that look like? That looks like the School Improvement Work Group here today, right? We're holding each other accountable to these four fundamentals in supporting systems and implementing these four fundamental areas. We're responsible for that. It looks like educators holding themselves and each of their colleagues responsible for improving their practice so that will improve student outcomes. It looks like systems holding themselves and taking responsibility for their accountability report, their student outcomes. It looks like that. But if it's only external accountability, we're not going to see the lasting changes, the improvement in student outcomes that we're looking for. So that's what we're doing right now is building up that internal accountability side. Because in the book, Follen talks about internal account, internal accountability must precede in the book, Fulan talks about internal account, internal accountability must precede external accountability. So as we build up this internal accountability side, I think it's really important that we, we develop the conditions to maximize that. And, and then we can talk about the external accountability side like accreditation standards, like student outcomes criteria, right, for accreditation. The external accountability side for us is accreditation. So we've got to make sure we've got that internal accountability built up, uh, prior to that. So we are working on developing the external accountability side of KISA. Uh, we talked a little bit about that yesterday, but we are working hard towards developing standards and developing that student outcome criteria and making sure that it's clear. Ben mentioned that earlier, being very clear. To be clear is to be kind, right? So to be very clear with that external accountability side of KISA. Now, the other part is in July, I just want to, uh, preface this a little bit, in July, what we will be bringing to the board are some technical changes to KISA. Technical changes. I would say that the, the standards, the student outcomes criteria are the adaptive changes to KISA. The technical aspects of KISA that we're bringing to the board in July will be number one, an equalization plan. An equalization plan where we have a plan to actually have around 70 systems each year go through the ARC instead of 179. So we want to equalize the number of systems going before the ARC each year. So we're going to bring that to, to the board, um, and that would begin in 24, 25. We also want to bring in the option of the regional peer review model as an additional option to the O V T model. Right now we have this O V T model, there's really, there's really one kind of way to do that. We want to add in options for systems. We talked yesterday about the issues with the O V T. The regional peer review model where systems get together at a service center and provide feedback, peer feedback on their standards and accreditation, that's what we're, we're wanting to implement, excuse me, and we've, we've pilot tested that and had good, good responses from systems on that. And then we want to take, we want to take some time to talk about our expectations for systems next year and 23, 24, what that looks like for next year. So we'll bring that back to, uh, the, uh, the board in July, the adaptive challenges, the adaptive changes we're talking about, the standards, the student outcomes criteria. We're planning on preparing that and bringing that to the board in October at the October State Board meeting. So I just wanted to preface that a little bit. And then just lastly, we've got to continue to work on those conditions for internal accountability before we get to the external accountability side. Very important to make sure we got that right and make sure that it's clear.
Thank you, Jay. So we want to just talk about, we're, we're calling them short-term next steps, but what do we do from here? And we mentioned that our school improvement group, again, large group and, and great people, and it's been, uh, for me, just a, an amazing experience to work with so many people and get to know them and get to know their work. Um, but we, we feel like this is a point in time. It's, it's, again, we're a work in progress. Uh, we don't have everything determined and you, you'll see here in a minute where we'll talk about the diligence that it takes to do this type of work and the idea that we want to make sure we get it right. But we feel like messaging, and I can speak both from a, a person who is now at the State Department, but also someone who has received information and direction from the State Department, that words matter and messaging matters and clarity matters. And we want to make sure that, that everything that we do as we move work forward is very clear, very transparent, and it's understood that, that anything that we're talking about here today is work that we want to be able to support and we must be able to support. So as we meet next week with our group, we're going to be talking about messaging and how we become very clear around this idea of accountability and how we're all accountable because ultimately it's about what we want for our students. But the idea being that we do believe there are things that have to be done well in each system. There are pockets of that being done well everywhere. There, there are so many wonderful things happening, but there's also, uh, a need and support is needed in, in, in these areas because as was mentioned earlier, these are not easy things to do. You, you can't just do them. There, there is a lot that goes into that and there's a lot of interconnected parts to that. We want to identify how we are going to measure internally the work that we're doing that ultimately is going to produce externally the results that we want for our students. And I think all of us would say on our team and, and across our, our division, that we don't have a lot of those lead measures in place right now and we want to establish those. How do we know that the work that we're doing is having the impact that we want it to have? And so we want to, we want to look at some initial lead measures that we can track, keep track of to ensure that we're moving that work forward in the very best way possible. And that's a, that's a new conversation and I think a really important one for us. Capacity, uh, everything is about building capacity. Everything that we're talking about today is about building capacity and there's a lot of professional learning that has to take place in order to do that. And we're equipped to do only so much. We talked about that a little bit earlier. We can't lead every system in each of these areas and that's where leveraging supports across the state is so critical, but taking the time to analyze capacity, what are we capable of doing right now? What do we have to move forward into service centers, into leadership organizations, into all those that, that ultimately are supporting schools across the state? And again, I mentioned, we want to take stock and really understand all the things that we're doing right now and how they align or, or what we need to put on the table to say, this, this has to be adjusted, we have to do this differently. Maybe we're asking information from people that has nothing to do with, with these fundamental elements. And so how do we bring those elements in, but also ensure that we're taking things off so it doesn't become this add-on and now we're asking you to do more, we're really asking you to do less and do those things really well. So those are just some short-term things. We're going to get into that, uh, with our school improvement group next week because we'll meet on Thursday, just like we always do at 8:00 AM. So to end today, I thought I'd end with the, an author that I tend to go to when I'm thinking about things that are getting too complex for me, which can happen a lot in the role that I'm in here at the State Department. Um, but I've always liked the, the, the book Good to Great and, and Jim Collins philosophies on leadership and simplicity and, and trying to do certain things really well. And the word that stood out to me a little bit here in this quote was the word diligence. And so I had to look it up. It's one of those I, I'm familiar with and probably could define, but I want to say, what is the actual definition? And one of the, the terms that was used to describe it was, uh, persistence, you know, and, and then as I was digging further, it's like when things get hard, I think it's exactly what we want our kids to have. You know, when things get hard, can you, can you, you know, work through that and do you have the supports you need to work through that so that you can stay on that path, you know? And, and so I think that's what we're challenged with here, distractions. That, that term distraction comes up all the time. Uh, there can be so many distractions from this work. So how do we stay really focused and really diligent? And, and, you know, this would just be me, but I, I don't think, I think what we're talking about here today, again, teaching students to read, making sure that every child who's capable is able to read because we know what happens when they can't. Making sure that, that when we, when we are assessing students, that that's useful and that we can adjust what we're doing for that student to ensure they're on a great path and we know how to do that in real time and we have the sports in place. And then identifying what is it that we want our kids to know and be able to do and being very clear about that. And I think that's a, a great conversation to have in, in school systems and across our state. Are there things that we want all Kansas kids to know and be able to do? And how do we become very explicit about that? And then how do we talk about instruction? I mean, these things to me, they, they cannot go away. We, we have to embrace those things as fundamentals that every system, every kid deserves to experience and then they can't go away. Things can come and things can go, but those have to stay permanent in, in Kansas and education and we have to do those things really well. And that's, that's what I think is, is the challenge is how you become not distracted by other things that, that ultimately you want to do. I think we can, we can do those other things as long as we do these fundamentals well and really build off that foundation. So we felt like it was important to share that, work with the board. Again, it's, it's all in progress. We're not talking about a new initiative. We're actually talking about doing the things that we probably say we do already. Very, very few systems would say they're not teaching kids to read, right? They're doing that to the very best of their ability right now. All systems are assessing, we require them to do that to some degree. All systems very likely know that there are standards and they're doing their very best to align to standards and they'll tell us, that's one of the biggest challenges they have. And I talked to a lot of superintendents that'll say, I just don't know how to do that. Here's what we're doing, is this what we're supposed to be doing? And then the, the one, that fundamental element that I think we just don't spend enough time on is what does quality instruction look like? How do you create the environment, you know, through the art and science of teaching that is great for every student? And so those are the things that we want to share with you. It can sound simple, they're very complex as you think about implementation across the state, but we would love to answer questions or, uh, hear any comments that you have on this work and we've got a great team that can do that and I'll do my best as well. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor. Um, I told everybody to hold their questions and so at the moment, there are none in the queue, they're starting to come in, um, but it, it, is it not working? Can you guys help Betty with her hand raise app? What I heard was there are a few levers. And I heard about things that we want to, quality for instance is subjective. So I'm curious about those measurements and I, I want to hear a little bit more about the levers. Accreditation was mentioned on accountability, um, but when I, for me, hearing this presentation as I kind of stepped back, identified some problems. I didn't hear a lot about the problems and then how we're going to measure success as we move towards those solutions. So I'll just kind of start with that. I'll, I'll go to Jim Porter first.
I just, I, I don't have a question, I have a comment. Several years ago, before I moved to Kansas, I applied for and was interviewed for an assistant commissioner's job in Department of Education. And during that interview, the first thing I said, they asked me, what would, what would you do on the first day that you were here? And I said, I would make sure that I understood what everybody was doing, exactly what you're doing. And I'm excited, I'm very excited to hear that. Now since, and I talked about silos and I lost the job by saying that. Uh, and, uh, because I, I can see that, so I had fun for the rest of the time, uh, to do that. But I'm very excited about the fact that, that in order for us to make progress, we all have to be on the same page and you can't be on the same page unless you talk to each other. So my, so I said, my comment is to say, I'm excited about the fact that that is happening and I encourage it to happen even with, with other divisions. Uh, and, and so I, I just appreciate that and, and wanted to, to point that out that, that I've always been impressed with this department as opposed to department in the other state with which I'm familiar because this department tries to help instead of play gotcha. Uh, and I see this as a step forward in that direction. Thank you.
Betty Arnold.
Thank you and good morning. I, you, this really was an excellent presentation. I have to compliment you and your group on that. Um, and the way that I measure that is when my heart starts to feel warm and, and I'm feeling inspired and I see hope, that's my measure. And boy, I tell you, I was really feeling pretty good here. I kind of liken it to when you're on an airplane and the, the stewardess says to you, you know, you have to put your oxygen mask on first before you can help others. And I see you teaching how to put your oxygen mask on first, which gives you the ability to reach others. And that is so encouraging to me because my focus and my concern has been all students and, and, and there's, there are those students that are on track and, and they're great to interact with and you feel really good about. But then there are those students, which we had an example yesterday, a young man from Goddard, and he was talking about being in such a dark place and it was just amazing what actually, um, created a change or a desire to look past himself. So I feel like when he made the comment of getting past himself and looking around, all of a sudden, teachers became amazing, but it was like he had that blinder on and, and couldn't really see the support there. I didn't realize we were going to see results of the retreat so quickly, uh, come to fruition, but I am so glad that you made this presentation. I feel really, really good that we're headed in the right direction. And so to you and your crew, I just want to say thank you. I enjoyed it.
I, I have the, just, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but I, I have the tendency to make people feel warm and fuzzy, you know? No, no, not at all. That's not typical, so. Not at all. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation, Ben. It's good, as everybody said, to see folks get on the same page and, you know, when you have new people come in and new ideas, that's all good. It occurred to me when we looked at the very first slide that there might be a focus on the board, even if you've been here a while, who don't understand what K L N, I mean, again, we're using terms that, they're going TAZN, K L N, what is that? Who pays for them? Are they on our staff? They not on our staff? So I remember when, one of the first, uh, when I hadn't been on the board too long, we had a presentation from TAZN, so maybe as a future agenda item, we could talk about what some of these organizations are and how K S D E interrelates with them. Okay, but here's my question. I'm looking at the four fundamentals and I, and your work, your next steps, and I don't see how that aligns to the new board goals we adapted, adopted last month. So can you help me understand that?
Sure. Yeah, great question and thank you. So when I think about the fundamentals and I think about how, how we situate, you know, whether it's established board outcomes or, or our new board goals, um, so I think about the, the first goal and I think about effective teachers and effective leaders and the importance of, of establishing, what do we mean by that? And how do we, how do we create an environment where we see more individuals who are staying in the teaching profession and staying in leadership, which is a critical element, especially as we see so many stepping out of leadership roles and new people stepping in. It's exciting, but at the same time, you know, you're losing a lot of, of, let's call it institutional knowledge. But I, I think that what we're wanting to create here, and I, I alluded to it just a little bit, but I do believe very strongly that if we do these fundamentals well, we're going to create an environment that's going to attract people to the profession. And I think some of that is, is yet to be seen, but as I talk to people who are teaching now, who are leading now, and they think about the, the, the idea of, of feeling like the, the, we're measuring in a different way. So we often hear that we, we put too much emphasis on one measure or, or one point in time and we're really talking about not doing that anymore. And so the pressure becomes healthy because we're talking about just elevating opportunities for kids. So I think without, uh, creating an environment where we're, we're, you know, encouraging people to step into leadership roles in education, encouraging young people to go into education, that we're not doing it well. So we have to situate it in a way that, that is ultimately supportive of that first board goal. Um, it's all centered in the, the second board goal, you know, as we think about, uh, ultimately, you know, the, the academic limitations that we identified early on, when we think about the correlations, it's not just about this assessment, but it's about how do our students perform and then what does that mean in terms of, of just what they're able to do if they graduate, once they graduate and ultimately have something beyond that graduation? So it's really centered in a lot of ways in that second board goal. Uh, we also, I think as part of our work with, as Mr. Porter mentioned, with other parts of just K S D E, uh, there's no better structure that we have in engaging our, our systems than budget workshops, which are happening starting today, right? Dr. Watson out West. And so we have Dr. Nein Swander and, and Dale Brungart out, uh, with eventually over the next couple of weeks, pretty of weeks, pretty much every school leader or district leader in the state. And the demand for that is so high, and I remember experiencing that as a superintendent. But part of that second goal is around, you know, a, that connection that we have from learning services with physical services and operations. And I think about that needs assessment process. And I got to experience that as I was leaving my school district, coming to KSD, and really for the first time, spent a good amount of time with our administrators, talking about budgets, talking about resources. And for the first time, probably felt well-equipped, as I was leaving, to start making the adjustments that are necessary within the resources that we have to produce different outcomes for kids. Because even though I understood how to budget, and I knew enough about school finance to make sure that the boxes were checked, I didn't know how to change the budget to better reflect the goals that we had. So we think about that cross-department engagement that this allows us to do. And we're not there yet, but I told Dale, you know, a couple days ago before he left, that I'm excited about our conversations this fall that can shape some of that content at a budget workshop, where we're really talking about, you know, how you're resourcing your system for, you know, changes that will allow, you know, the pursuit of these fundamentals. You know, so that's where I see a lot of that, that cross-division work, where we're starting to speak the same language, and we're not just talking about school finance, but it's in the context of what do we want our kids to experience? So I see it very embedded in that second goal. The third one, the community and family partnerships, I think that's what I see as the ultimate in coherence building. And I think if our communities aren't understanding that there is a right way to teach almost all students to read, and they're demanding that, then I think we haven't done our job of creating those really strong partnerships. So I think what do we want to partner on? And I think part of that is, we want to partner on the experience that our kids are having in schools. And that includes families first, but it also includes those community resources that you have. So you start to, you know, employ resources within those communities that ultimately are producing these types of outcomes that we're all seeking for our kids. You can't do any of this if you don't have a safe environment for your students. It starts with that. And that's, that's security for sure, but it's also the feelings that your kids have in your school, and the types of relationships that are being built, and the climate that they walk into. So I feel like, in my opinion, you know, I try to center things around what's fundamental, what does every system have to have, and then how do other things situate? And I see every, every aspect of those board goals being situated within, you know, this idea that we do have certain things that systems want to do, but without quality educators and quality leaders, we will not achieve it. And if we're not creating an environment where we have more stepping into those roles that want to do it, because they want, you know, they understand the purpose and what they can create for our children, then we haven't done our job the way I think we need to, and I think the way we can. We have to start talking about resources and quality materials, and how systems are equipped to be able to do that. And that takes money. And so bridging, you know, this, this learning services and physical services, and we're so apt to do that, I mean, we're so ready for that. And, and the community element, and informing communities of what they need to know about student performance, and what they want their, I think communities should talk about, what do we want every kid to know and be able to do? It doesn't have to be overly complicated. Do we want our kids to be good listeners or not? Because you can do that every day in every classroom, and if you expect it, it'll happen. If you have a great teacher that's facilitating that, it's amazing when you see it. You know, and it starts with little bitty ones. They're really the best at it, and then we train them not to do it, because we're just not intentional about it. So I think communities demand that. I would demand that as a parent. And then it has, we have to have, not only safety, but just a good culture, good climate in every system. So that's how I would answer that.
So somebody on staff is assigned to each of our goals and sub-goals and tracking to make sure we're going that direction?
That's, that's part of our work, and I think, you know, as we think about levers, I think that's what we're ready to build now. This is, again, going back, we're a work in progress, so we're not presenting, you know, this, this well-defined plan as to how we do all this. We've identified what, and we have some really good ideas on how. And part of that short-term work is to say, what do we know right now? We know that KISA, as an example, and Jay and our team, we've been, we've been having challenging conversations, because we want to take the time to do it right, but we don't want to say, you know, we have no accountability, or we're going to take a year off. And I've asked superintendents that question, like, if we don't, if we don't do accreditation as we've known it for the next year, are you going to quit, like, doing good things for kids in some form or fashion? And one person just said, I'm offended that you would even ask that. We're going to do good things for kids. Right? But we want to, I think through that mechanism, through that particular lever, we want to make sure we've done it right. Our team, Jay and his team, Ira and Sarah, they have done an amazing job of listening. As, as good a job as any group I've been around, they have, they have taken feedback, and now we're trying to take that feedback, move something forward that's going to be most effective. So I think that's the work to come, and you're going to hear more about that in July around that particular lever. And then we have put ourselves in a, in a position, but by October, we want to bring something well-defined on accountability to the board.
Something that looks different than the eight accreditation criteria we have now?
I think there'll be some, some differences as we think about focusing and ensuring that whatever we're doing, we're establishing fundamentals as part of the work that has to be done in the system.
Could I have one more question? Are we sure, since we, I mean, we're all invested in structured literacy, and we made that decision three years ago, do we know for a fact that all the universities and colleges are now teaching structured literacy in their teacher ed programs? Because I'm hearing that's not happening.
I haven't done analysis of that. We are getting ready, I'm getting ready to participate in higher ed meetings, and I think that's part of what we want to find out. I don't know if Dr. Curtis could speak to that, or if we want to get back into that, you know, in future meetings, we can certainly do that. But I think it's an important conversation, and we need to be able to answer that, yes.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Proctor, you had mentioned about superintendents were confused about, or some of them were confused about, how do we, how do we get to those standards, like this, what are you talking about, as far as assessments and state assessments? And you, and someone else talked about, you know, it could be a unit test, it could be a, we're constantly measuring, we're constantly assessing, it just may be called something different than just the one snapshot of a state assessment once a year, or whatever. So I, I think some of the, some of the, maybe confusion is, with the different communities, you have all these different boards out there that are elected. There's the seven board members are elected, and then they hire their superintendent. The superintendent is to reflect the board that's elected in those communities. So when you're talking about state assessments and outcomes, the parents driving the child's education, they're driving their outcomes that they want to see. You know, you're talking about individual plans of study, what they, what they want to see from that kid. Maybe they want him to thrive and go on and be this or that. So as far as like, the superintendents, and going back to the superintendents who are, who are following the policies that are, that the board is driving in that community, you might have 95% that are wanting, wanting certain things taught in that community. So you have, you have your assessments at the state level and outcomes, but the, but the, we don't set the curriculum, the local board sets the curriculum, correct? So they have their materials, whatever they're doing to drive to set to our standards, which are rigorous at the state board. What, what looks different and unique across Kansas is everything is done differently as far as the curriculum that's set in those communities. They all use their own, they all use your own curriculum, their videos, whatever, the materials, their books, but that's, that's decided by that community and by the elected board that's, that's in that community. So there's where the confusion, I think, lies, is we might have an outcome for that kid, and we're trying to narrow down, you're saying, get specific, get explicit, what we want them to learn. Well, we don't want them all learning the same thing, because that's what, that's not education. Education is imparting knowledge from the classroom that's coming from that teacher that may have different experiences and different things to share on how to, you know, get through the points on math, or get through things on ELA. And so I think we have, we have such uniqueness going out there, I just want to make sure that the outcomes that we're driving for the state assessments, that's why it's so confusing, is they're teaching to a standard, but they're doing it in their own unique way. So it's, we don't want them all doing the exact same thing. And I think that that's why when they say, we need to assess, we need to assess, and it needs to all come out the same, no, that's not education. Because we're, everybody has different experiences, and they're imparting the information from the teacher in a unique way. So I think the most important thing is to quality teaching, is that that student and that parent and that child connect. That's the most important thing, in my opinion, is those, those three connect in a way that's, that's individualized for that child, rather than coming out with an outcome and taking an assessment and getting around until we all come up with the same, the same outlook or the same outcome. That's not, that's not, that's not education. So I just want to make sure, there's so, so many superintendents that are probably thinking, what, I'm trying to represent my community. I have nine, you know, 95% that want this, and I need to reflect that. And, and the elected board there is driving that curriculum and driving those things, rather than coming from a higher, from a higher, you know, purview as far as a state or federal or whatever. It needs to be, it needs to be local, it needs to be driven by the parents, and needs to reflect the community. So I just wanted to point that out, that that's probably where the confusion is, was how do I teach to a standard, but I do it in a way that's unique to that community? And I think that that's what we need to keep saying and reiterating, is it needs to be local, it needs to be, it needs to be measured locally, and not so much, everybody has to know and learn the same exact thing, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to come back to, first of all, I'm usually not the warm and fuzzy one. The farther in the weeds I get, the worse it can be. So I do appreciate the work that's being presented here, and I see this as a beginning, it's an opportunity. There was a comment early on, take away limitations for kids. And it just really got the wheels turning for me, and a little bit of it Michelle just hit on. We all hear from parents, and typically, as a board member, that's an escalation, right? They're, they're calling us because they're frustrated, and they're trying to get solutions to problems that we can't solve from where we sit. And we can kind of point them in directions, and sometimes it's to the department, but a lot of times it's back to their local district and their local board. So I have a lot of different thoughts about what I've heard today. Part of its interventions, part of its culture, and it was great to hear so much about culture, but I will just ask a lengthy question, which is, will student voice be part of the work? Michelle talked about parents and that connection. I have my own measures for my kids' success. I have two kids in high school right now, and those of us who have our own students that are in the system, and grandkids, nieces, nephews, I've got my own measures. My kids probably have their own measures for how they determine whether or not they are being successful. And so I just, I'd like to see that feedback loop of parents and students, but particularly, after the work that we did on student voice last year, and it continues this year, I just really want to emphasize, and the, the presentation that we heard yesterday, right? Really want to hear that, that student involvement piece as well.
Certainly.
Thanks.
Now, I'll just say, just very briefly, I think that's a great point, and in my time, I, it's not something that I did very well, until kind of the end of my administrative time. And when I started talking to kids, so I just had a structure in place where I would go and, at the end of, when they were really free to talk about whatever was on their mind, when they were graduating, and we were within a week or so of graduation, I'd go and meet with all of our seniors in small groups, and, and then ask them specific questions. And I don't know if I've ever had a more enlightening experience than talking to kids about their, their career, you know, within the system, whether that was, you know, at some point they moved in. And one of the things that stood out to me, and I think, Ms. Hauss, your, your point is really good, and I'm sure there are people back there taking notes, but one of the things that stood out to me was, when I would ask them about the, the best teachers that they had, the consistent response was, was referencing teachers that expected a lot from them. You know, there was an expectation, there was a high expectation, they knew that where they were coming from. And so, another theme that I always got from kids was, at the time, I probably wouldn't have said, this was my favorite teacher. You know, I knew they cared about me, but they expected a lot of me, and I didn't like that at the time, but thinking back, it was just amazing how that was so consistent, year after year, from different groups. But I, yes, I would say student voice in this is, is critical, so.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you all so much.
Next month, more?
Yep.
August, more? September, more? October, bringing it all together? So I just want to kind of lay out, this is the first of many discussions about where we're thinking about going, culminating with, as, as we've talked about it, KISA, and a little bit different look with that.
Board members, we will take a 12-minute break, back at 10:30. Board members, we will take a 12-minute break back at 10:30. Next up is a learning series presentation on teacher licensure. Welcome, Shane Carter.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Dr. Watson, ladies and gentlemen of the board. So here, in a moment, I'm going to try to do my best to provide you a fast and furious 30 minutes of licensure training. And I know you all be experts in licensure when I'm done, but I am a little disheartened because I have to somehow figure out how I'm going to top warm and fuzzy, and I just don't know if I can do it. But we're going to try. So first, I brought gifts, or not gifts, but artifacts. If you all would like to take a look, you may be asking, "What are these frames and books that I'm looking at?" So it's basically old certificates. I think the earliest one in there is from the 1880s. And there's also our handbooks that were used over the years dating back to 1943. And then I have a whole other collection, if you're interested after you want to take a look, that go through 1943 to current. But as I'm giving this update, I just thought it would give you a little something to look at and keep you awake. So before I get going, I want to kind of lay out what we're going to do. So first, from my leadership perspective, I'm big on mission first and people always. And so when we start this conversation, I'm going to quickly introduce you to my staff, and then we're going to get into the key areas that I think that are important for you all. It's the licensing and background checks, because a lot of the questions you probably receive are going to be related to those areas. And then we'll go through the licensure experience for an individual. All right, so we'll first start with my coordinators. So we have Ann Yates. She's really truly not a licensure team member, but I provide administrative control for her, which help her out anything, any support she needs, I'm there for. We also have Tenay Olson, our admin specialist. Our coordinators, Nick Nelson, Joe Midgley, who's to my left, Krista Chesmore, Joe Gillespie, and Ed Kalas. We also have a series of public service administrators, REAs. We have Jessica Padakis, Cindy Coleman, Luke McClurg, Myra Stitham, and Connie Comstock. And then I have two part-time individuals that help the team as well. Ms. Maria Cudney-Christians, she was full-time. She had to leave this spring, so she's stayed on with us over the summer, but we will lose her after the summer. And then Ms. Lori Adams, that worked with the department for many years, just recently accepted a principal job, so she'll no longer be able to serve in a part-time capacity. So I tried to break down our team responsibilities in an easy way for you to see what all we do. The two areas that are highlighted and bold, that's where we're going to spend most of our time speaking about today, so that application processing and fingerprint background check processing. But in addition to that, we do DCF record checks. So that's the Department of Children and Family. Anybody that submits an application is checked against their system to see if there's any record information or any findings for those individuals. We're big on customer service. We'll get into the customer service piece in the next few slides, a little update on that. System management, there was a question last night about the different type of data that we collect. We have three major systems that we collect data in. That's our application system, our licensure system, and then our licensed personnel report system, which we'll cover next month in detail. A new area that we're working is apprenticeship programs. We work professional development plans. You see that on your consent agenda, as well as mentoring plans. You'll see those shortly as well. We also do program reviews, which we coordinate, or we work with the accreditation team. Two of our coordinators work with them as well to conduct those reviews. We provide external training to customers, districts, service centers, or universities, and even new students coming into the field, how to use our systems. We do monthly reporting, mainly with KBI and our fiscal department, to make sure that our finances are straight. We also do a lot of work with Professional Standards Board and Subcommittee Management, which takes up a lot of time. Contract management, yesterday you heard from Dr. Nein Swander about National Board Certification and Mentor Stipends, so we're heavily involved with that work as well. So a few things, licensure by the numbers. On any given year, we're issuing about 25,000 licenses each year. As far as background checks, around 8,000. We're going to probably finish the year a little higher than that, probably around 8,500, 8,700. Our total valid licenses that we have right now, that number's actually increased, a significant number for me, as I've been tracking this data over the last few years. For the first time, we've surpassed the 80,000 number, so there's about 80,229 individuals that are licensed in Kansas currently. Phone calls, you know, we talk about customer service, and I can't stress enough, that's one of the difficult aspects of our job, and that's probably, were to bleed over into your work, you'll get calls about, you know, the time that it takes for a license to get processed or what. But we're extremely focused on customer service, and with that, you know, our phone lines are open all the time. And in a given year, we end up having about 44,000. And of those 44,000, the average time that we're on the phone per customer is about two minutes. So if you start breaking that down, as far as work hours for a staff member, one staff member would be answering calls eight hours a day for 200 days if that was allotted to one person. But we are committed to customer service, and if I were to put up the email replies and the emails were received, you would have a very similar number. So we try to be very proactive in that. Now, with that said, I think that's our biggest area of improvement. We had a discussion about clarity and communication. We start talking about licensure, and we start breaking down these licenses in a minute. There's a disconnect between, you know, the information an individual's able to go and find on their own, and then kind of the actual application they're submitting, but it can get pretty complicated. I wanted to provide you a list of regulations and statutes, and I didn't want to spend time going through all the statutes or regulations, but if you are on, you're going to see pictures of our website later on our licensure page, if you're ever concerned about a licensure regulation, and you don't want to reach out to me, you can go to our licensure page, and there's a link for them that you'll find, and it's pretty easy to find and get to. But in addition to our licensure regs, we work with student teacher regulations. There's a piece for KISA that we're tied into that we have to follow, and we have mentoring regs and accreditation regs as well. And statutes, teacher licensure, if you're on the State Reviser website, if you're in the 72 series, and then the 72-21, those all be teacher licensure related. The one odd one we have is the licensee in military service. It actually has about a name that's probably 20 words long, but it's basically the statute that allows us to, or tells us to process individuals that have the immediate experience requirements coming from out of state, and establishes a timeline for processing applications for our team. So the main bulk of our conversation, we're going to talk about licensing options. Now, six months ago, the term unencumbered didn't really mean much to me, but I think it's very important you understand this, because the Teacher Mobility Compact, right now, there's eight states that have approved it. And if you recall from our briefings earlier in the year, 10 is our magic number, and we're very close to 10. Right now, Oregon and Alabama are pending approval. I think Alabama's governor has it on the desk to sign, and then Oregon is trying to work out some type of wording, and then we expect it to get approved. So that's going to happen sooner rather than later. So as we go through these, I wanted to be sure to clarify what we considered as encumbered or unencumbered. So first, we'll start with our standard licenses, and those are the initial. That's the two-year license that's issued to a teacher that just finished a program, or it could be a professional educator that completed a school specialist program, which is school counselor, reading specialist, school psychologist, and I just forgot one. So, but anyway, for those school specialist areas, you always start out with an initial. And same thing for leadership, which you have a building and a district. Next, in kind of the series of where you go from initial, you complete a performance assessment for teaching, which is a two-year mentoring program that's completed, and then an individual moves to that professional license. That professional license is a five-year license, and then once it's set to expire, an individual can renew it by meeting different renewal requirements. And as far as our licenses, the professional license is our second most processed license. Number one is our emergency substitute license. And then our next standard license that's unencumbered is the accomplished, and that is a 10-year license. So if an individual goes through the process to receive National Board Certification, they provide us proof of that, then we can issue, based on statute, a 10-year license to that individual. So other license options, these are going to be encumbered. So based on the Teacher Mobility Compact, these would represent licenses that aren't transferable. So those three that you saw on the previous slide, where when we're talking about unencumbered and what could transfer to another state, it was those three licenses. So our temporary non-renewable, and an individual qualifies for that license if they're deficient testing, and that can be content or pedagogy. And I know a question was brought up last night in regards to testing and what we require. So the requirements are a pedagogy test, how to be a teacher, or to check your skills on how you teach, and two is a content exam. I provided you a test chart. That's another thing I dropped off for you. So if you're interested in the different content tests that are required, or the PLTs, those pedagogy tests, that's a list of all those tests there. Transitional license, it's also licensed that an individual, and all the licenses that I've spoke about so far, an individual that's in-state or completed out-of-state programs can qualify for these licenses. Same thing for the temporary non-renewable and the transitional. So a transitional license is issued for a couple of things. One, if an individual is deficient recency, and recency is defined as that one year of accredited experience out of the last six years, or eight college credit hours completed out of the last six years. So you see this license a lot of individuals coming from out of state. They left their profession, and 10 years later, they're coming to apply. They left their profession, and, you know, ten years later, they're coming to apply. They held a professional license. We'll issue them a transitional license to meet recency, and then they'll upgrade to that professional license. Another option for the transitional license is a Kansas licensed individual whose professional license, initial license, has expired, and it's been expired over six months, and they don't meet requirements to renew, then they qualify for that transitional. Next, we have the provisional. So the provisional license, it kind of feeds in with waivers as well. So most often, we see provisional licenses for special education areas, high incidence, low incidence, but other areas you can qualify for a provisional license as well. But the premise of that is you complete a certain amount of college credit hours of that program, and then you can qualify for the license. And while you're serving in that position, you finish your program and then qualify for the full license once the program's completed. So as far as the provisional license, it can also be for some of our school specialist areas, such as school counselor or library media specialist in addition to those teaching areas. But it's not available for leadership positions. Next, we have interim alternative, and that's a license that's set up for individuals that have to go through our LRC committee. Once again, that's a consent agenda item that you receive, and that process is, it takes, it takes a while because we're limited to times that we meet in a year, and depending on when we receive an application, it may meet a meeting or make a meeting, or it may not. And then finally, the waivers. So I wanted to give you a little background on the waivers. One, they're for teaching endorsements like special education. The way that we offer a lot of our programs, an individual comes in with an initial license, licensed for PE or elementary ed, but the district needs to utilize them in a special education position. If that individual decides that they will enroll in a special education program and serve in that position, the district can apply for a waiver. So the waiver is kind of the start of the process. The individual can be on a waiver for up to three years. During that three years, we'll use a special education endorsement, such as high incidence. If an individual completes three courses, a course on characteristics, a course on practicum, and a course on methods, then they can qualify for a provisional license. They move to that provisional license, finish their program, and then add that endorsement to their license. But between the waiver process and the provisional license, an individual could have up to seven years to finish that special education program. We also, this is going to be a big one for the next year, we can issue waivers for individuals that need to extend the number of days that they serve on a substitute license. So for the last three years, the state board had implemented some emergency measures to extend that time. We're making a transition and changing out of that. So now we'll start processing waivers to extend those substitute licenses. All right, we'll continue on with our encumbered licenses. So non-traditional, which we have more pathways that are considered non-traditional that have sprung up over the last three years in response to teacher vacancy and supply. But first is the restricted teaching license. This has been around for a long time, like two thousand nine, and that's geared towards individuals that have a bachelor's degree in a content area, and they're looking to transition to teach. So the restricted license is issued to that individual for like biology. They teach, complete their, they're hired at a district, receive the restricted teaching license, finish their program, and then come out after they finish their program with either an initial or a professional license. The next are our innovative programs, and I know I had a question, you know, a couple months ago about the different programs that we're offering, and I think it was mainly in response to these innovative programs. But these kind of came, came out through the Teacher Vacancy Supply Committee's original recommendations. So there was a limited apprentice license that was created for high incidence. So if an individual has a bachelor's degree and has a year of para experience or equivalent, then they can enroll in this limited apprentice license program, qualify for that license, complete their program, or teach while they're complete their program, and then upgrade to that initial license once they finish. We also have the TAP program, Teacher Apprenticeship Program, which is offered only by Wichita State, and it's set up for an individual to earn a elementary ed K-2 six endorsement or early childhood unified endorsement, which is birth to grade three, and that allows an individual to teach general ed and provide support services, special ed support services to those age students. And next, we have the Limited Elementary Apprentice Program, and that's set up for that individual that has a bachelor's degree and wants to serve in an elementary position. They're getting a master's program, and they teach while they finish the program. Now, something I'd like to point out, because this will feed into our, our conversation we're going to have later in the day, you see the term apprentice used in this. Whenever we're talking about a registered apprenticeship program, it's not the same thing. These, the actual term we should probably use for these license options is residency. So just keep that in mind, and, you know, for that clarity and communication piece, when we're using the term apprentice and registered apprenticeship, it really, it really confuses the field, and it's kind of tough to, to explain and get people to understand that they are different. All right, continue on. We're almost through all the licenses, almost. So other non-traditional licenses, visiting scholar licenses, you'll start to see those on the consent agenda items next month, or we quite a few that come through. We typically have maybe thirteen or fourteen of these licenses issued a year. But for an individual to meet the requirements for this license, they have to hold an advanced degree, typically it ends up being a PhD, but not always. Must be at least a master's degree. They have to have experience in that specific field for which they're serving, and/or have some type of distinguished recognition in the field. So distinguished recognition could be, maybe they received an award for making a movie, or they wrote six books, published authors, or served in, participated in several studies, and, you know, provided input for those studies. So things of that nature, but you'll start seeing those starting during the next board meeting. And then we also have a STEM license, which is part of a statutory requirement. And as far as the qualifying for that license, it's set up for an individual that holds a science, technology, engineering, or mathematics bachelor's degree, and has five years of experience in that specific content area in the field, then then qualify for that one year STEM license. All right, I promise, last slide of licenses. Whoever thought we would have so many licenses, right? So we're in our CTE certificates, so there is a distinction between a license and a certificate, and certificates have a different set of regs than the license. But the first is the standard technical. This is the only other unencumbered license. So an individual that qualifies for that standard technical license has completed a teacher preparation program and has content experience in that area that they're teaching. So it's kind of a different route for individuals that are in those CTE fields to qualify for a license other than the restricted. As far as the restricted technical, that is how an individual first starts to qualify for that standard technical. They get enrolled in that teacher prep program, complete the restricted technical program, and then once it's finished, then they qualify for that standard certificate. The CTE specialized, that is very similar to the statute implemented STEM license, but for individuals that are serving in a STEM, or not a STEM, excuse me, a career and technical ed pathway, if they meet certain requirements, which is having an industry-recognized credential, five-years' work experience, then they can qualify for the CTE specialized license and continue to qualify for that as long as they teach in the pathway. But if they're not in the pathway, they can't serve, they can't qualify for this license. And it's broken into two areas, half-time and full-time, and the requirements for the half-time and full-time differ. You can have less work experience for the half-time than versus the full-time. And then finally, our substitute licenses, we offer the standard substitute license, which for an individual to qualify for that, they've had to have completed a teacher preparation program. And then they can also qualify for, if they've held a previous Kansas license, such as a, you know, initial professional, and it's expired, and they just want to sub, they can qualify for that standard substitute license. And then we have our emergency substitute license.
Can we squeeze a couple of questions in here?
Sure. I probably need a break anyway, so I can catch my breath.
Okay. Betty.
Okay. I'm trying to get to this. I'm going back because this, my question actually comes from this sheet where we were talking about the test. And I didn't say thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a lot to digest, and it's still, even with this sheet, I'm having a little bit of a challenge trying to understand.
Sure.
So let's take on here, you got elementary education. And then there's a block of test names. So am I to assume for elementary education, all of these tests have to be taken? It's one, two, it's quite a few.
No. So what this list is, it's our most current set of tests that are valid, or some that have recently changed. Because if an individual completes a program, we have a certain amount of time that we can accept a test score, so you're going to see a lot of duplication on here. So if you're starting from left to right, you're going to have for the endorsement code, you'll have whatever that content area is. You'll have the test code, and that's important to the applicant when they're trying to register to take the test, because different states offer different tests. They may be called something similar, but that test code is a unique identifier. Your test name, that'll break down, we'll take biology, for instance. So there's, you see two biology content knowledge exams there. If you move to the right, they both cut score, what they have to meet in order to pass, and then you see the effective date. When you move over to the expiration date, so that first fifty-two thirty-five biology content exam basically expired on September first, twenty twenty-two.
Where are you?
So we changed tests. Oh, are you on the wrong page?
Wait, wait. I was asking, I was asking her to...
I'm going to get into elementary, it's more difficult to explain. So, but, so what it's telling you is, you may see duplicate tests on here, but one of them was regenerated. You all, on a consent agenda item, just approved two new tests that are, that are going to be regenerated. So when we update the sheet, you're going to see the old special education tests listed on here with an expiration date that we can no longer accept them, and then the current test that's going to be offered as of September first of twenty twenty-three. Now, when we break into the elementary, this leads into my discussion about the elementary. We changed elementary tests, starting like two thousand eighteen, there's been three different changes. So there's some old test, okay, I'll slow down.
Yes, yes. Because you lose me.
Okay.
Okay. Let me try to ask my question here, and Ann is trying to help me understand a little bit too.
Yeah. So if you're education unified, you'd take the elementary ed, the pedagogy test, and then you'd have four subject area tests. Would that be right?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm, so there are five tests. If I, are they five separate?
So technically, no. It would be two tests. So each one of those subtests that you have listed there, this has actually been a benefit or a change to that individual that's taking the test. An individual would register for the elementary content knowledge CKT, and once they register for that test, the test is broken up into four subtests.
Okay.
So in the past, individuals would register for one test. The test still had all four components. They would still be tested on social studies, English Language Arts, science, and mathematics. But if that individual didn't pass, they had to take the whole test again. So that would have to take all the math, all of the social studies, all of the English and science. So now, ETS went to a subtest system. They still register for the one test, the elementary content knowledge test. It's broken into four subtests, but if an individual doesn't pass one particular area, they no longer have to take the full test. They take just that specific content, subtest that they needed to improve.
Okay.
Now, when you break into, because part of your question last night was referencing, you know, the funding for how much it costs.
Right.
You know, these tests would range anywhere from a hundred and twenty dollars up to, when you get into administration tests, about five hundred dollars. But most of the teacher tests are setting around between one-twenty and a hundred and thirty. And if an individual did fail a particular subtest, they would have to register for the test again, and they would have to pay the full fee to take that test again.
Not, okay, they have to pay the full.
Yes.
So we don't have anything broken out where...
I don't have that at the moment, but I can get that for you.
No, no, no. And you don't have to, what, all I'm trying to understand, sometimes I'm engaged in a conversation and, because I'm not an educator, that's not my field. It's good to understand what they're talking about, you know. And I had, I had someone to share with me, and I'm still, I need to track down that email, that, that what I didn't understand is there are several different tests, and they, and each test is very pricey. And it wasn't suggested to me that it was in the components, and you're just paying for the whole test just to take that component. It was like, if I am elementary education, I ought to take this test for two-seventy-nine, I'm making up these numbers, this one for three-thirty, and I had never heard of that. So I'm trying to get enough of a background knowledge that I understand what they're talking about.
Yeah. Kind of a good place to start is trying to find out what program they completed. So if they were in the Wichita State TAP program, you can come out with a elementary education K-2 six license and an elementary childhood unified, birth to grade three. So if you look down at the chart, if you look at that early childhood, birth to grade three unified, seven-six-zero-eight-nine, in order to qualify for that license, there's tests that have to be taken. There's two tests that are required to qualify for that endorsement. And then when you get into the elementary education, if the person wanted all those endorsements, they would have to take the elementary test too, in which there are those subtests. And then a lot of individuals that are taking tests, they don't make the connection that those subtests are not independent tests. It's all part of that group of the elementary content knowledge test.
So as an example, if they're trying to go for the whole whatever, I mean, I want to be, I want to be qualified in all of this, what would just a maximum idea of general range, all of this testing cost that person?
Yeah. So you're probably talking about two-hundred-and-forty, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, because whatever their content area is, they're going to have to take the PLT, which will run about a hundred and twenty, and then they'll take their content test, which probably is going to be around a hundred and thirty. Now, that's an average. There are certain tests that are a little more expensive in this group, but at a minimum two tests would be taken, so.
And so when they, when this individual is getting ready to take these different tests, they're just, they're paying for both of them at the same time and test it differently? Or is this all one time?
No, no, it's totally up to the individual. They can choose to take, you know, a test on, you know, the same day, but most likely they'll spread it out. So they can register, and based on their schedule, they're able to adjust when they want to take that test.
That's what, yeah, I was wondering about that, because that's a lot of testing, and I would get brain dead real quick on how much I could be tested. So they pay for it, and they're able to spread it out, I mean, you work with them over whatever reasonable period of time?
Well, ETS will, they'll set that date for them. So there's options, they'll either go to a test center to take the test, or there's an option to test from home. When they register, that individual will establish a time that they, a time and date that they want to take the tests. And then based on that registration, that's when that test would be offered and how it will be delivered.
And one other question. Is there anything available, let's say that someone has graduated from college, they're trying to get their license, is there anything available that helps them with the cost of all of the testing?
Not, not at the moment. There are some universities that are starting to pay for the actual tests for individuals. In some cases, districts have paid for individuals to take the test, but there's not a funding pot that's set up that, you know, anybody can, you know, tap into in order to pay for those tests. It's totally up to the university or that district if they want to provide that support.
Yeah. And what I was asking, not necessarily here, but just available resources that a person could go to if, if they, they're not working, and so they may not have all of the money readily at hand. And I just wondered if there was a resource, whether it's the department or other places, that they could go to if they needed assistance in that.
Yeah. And not from our...
Not that you're aware of?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure where this fits in, but can you back up where you had the TAP? Yes. So I know that that's a program that only Wichita State, so is, apparently it has its own licensing.
Yeah. So all those licenses that are listed under innovative programs, there's a regulation that's set up for higher-ed accreditation that they can apply for innovative programs, which means there's some part of the regulation that they don't meet, and we can provide a license. And in these three areas, the piece of the regulation they don't meet... And, and in these three areas, the, the piece of the regulation they don't meet is that they're qualifying for a license as they complete their program.
Okay. Where does, because we just also approved on the Consent Agenda Ford Hays State's new elementary ed transition to teach is what they call it, but, program. So that actually gets them a full license at the end, or no?
Yes, it will. But they're going to, they're going to start with this limited elementary apprenticeship program. So this was established by K-State last year, and now other universities are developing programs and putting it through the process to get approved. So that program that you're talking about, they'll start, they get hired, they'll finish some coursework, qualify for that limited elementary apprentice program license, and then after two years or a year and a half, they would finish their program and qualify for that full initial license.
Okay, thank you, because I talked with them about it, but I was just trying to find it in here to connect the two.
Sure.
So, thank you. Jim Porter.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask you about four questions. Three of, three of them I don't even answer today.
Okay.
But the Dyslexia Task Force, when it made a recommendation, asked for testing to prove that people, whenever they took their initial test, were qualified in this, in the, in, in reading, structured literacy. Does this test, does this content test for elementary teachers measure that?
I will get back to you on that, because I want to say yes.
We were told, we were told the answer was yes, but I'd like to confirm that.
I, I want to confirm it, too, but I, I believe it's yes, but I want to confirm.
Okay, now these, I don't expect an answer today. I'm getting recommended, I'm getting letters, I'm getting requests from especially special education directors to extend the limits on substitutes. And I just, you know, you, at some point, we need, probably need to discuss whether the, the pros and cons of that.
Yeah.
Also, there are all sorts of questions. I'm going to come, I'm going to come to this from two different directions.
Sure.
The first direction is that, does the content test or the pedagogy test, either one of those, is there any research about how that is predictive of success? I don't need an answer right now. And also, I'm told that there are higher institution, institutions that teach teachers where virtually every student passes their test on the first time, and there are others where they don't. Should we consider that? Is that a reasonable something for us to consider whenever we're approving their programs? I see, I don't need answers to that today, but I, that, those are things that I think that we need to discuss in the future.
Yep, okay. But I, but on that last point, I will let you know where there is some data that's available. Every institution that has an approved program has to report Title II data, and then you can find that institution's test scores for program completers, what their percentage of, of pass rates. And it's, you know, it is different amongst institutions. They're not all the same, so there are some that have higher scores than others.
Yes, or I had a point, another one. On the visiting scholar, is that just for that district, correct, when they apply for it?
That, that is correct, and it's limited to whatever course load that they want to teach. So let's take science, for instance. Individual has a biology degree and a lot of biology experience and received some type of distinction in biology, then their coursework should be allotted to biology. They shouldn't be teaching earth-space science or something. So if that came through, we would say, before it came to you for approval, we would remove that course and endorsement, and just say, no, they're only authorized for this area.
And it's good for that school year? They have to do it?
Every year.
Every year? And is there a limit to how many times a person can do that, or a district?
There's, there's not a limit.
Okay.
But we try to encourage individuals to go the route of the restricted teaching license as a long-term solution versus that visiting scholar.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let you get back to your presentation. We'll hold the rest of our questions till.
And I am well over time. Do you want me to run, or do you want to stop here and say you've had enough?
Let me check our schedule. I believe our, I, I see our next presenter sitting out in the hall. I think you're good. Go, go ahead and.
Okay, I will do my best to pick up my pace. All right, so the applicant experience. So anytime an individual needs to apply for a license, they need to make some type of change, or their education history changed, then they'll, they'll submit an application. So there's a couple of applications that I didn't mention on here, but, you know, adding endorsements and things of that nature. But anytime, any type of license change has to happen, the individual has to submit an application and a fee. Right now, our standard processing time is about 10 working days. It actually varies between our particular applications. Some are well quicker than that, and it just depends on what specific action that individual's trying to take. How we process applications, there's a receipt date. When they pay for that application, it's downloaded into our system the next day, and then they're queued based on that receipt date. So we start processing them by that most, whatever the oldest receipt date is and working through them in that manner. And as far as renewing a license, at any point, like an initial license, professional license, accomplished, whatever it is, the individual can start renewing six months prior to. We have that six months built in there, because, you know, our processing time used to take quite a bit longer, but it also provides us plenty of time to work an application for an individual in case they're missing time. But instead of applying the day before it's set to expire, they have that time that they can work with, up to six months. All right, the applicant experience, so the kind of the first place to start, and we encourage, if you ever need to find information on licensure or wonder how it's set up, you go to our licensure page. There is a link on the KSD homepage. Under the Popular Resources, you can click on it, and you'll go to this page. So this is the teacher licensure homepage. On the left-hand side, there would be a series of links I mentioned earlier about licensure regulations. You can find a whole bunch of resources that are useful there. Kind of the thing that we've promoted, we have implemented back in the fall of 2022, is our new survey system. We're trying to get after, you notice, we had 44,000 phone calls. We're trying to find a way to streamline information for individuals, so we allow them to take these surveys that kind of guides them to the license that they need to apply, and then guides them to answer questions that they may have about the, the, the licensure process. We've had about 20,000 people take that, one of these three surveys. And as far as our, our rate of people that found it, found the information that they needed, we're setting around 90%. So 90% of the people that use it, they say they're able to find their application, and they fully understand what they need to do. As far as this actual website, we have about 186,000, roughly 200,000 hits on it a year, so a lot of traffic coming in to review it. Directly below it, you'll see a series of links, license application, license lookup, fingerprint information, little quick stops that an individual can go to find all the information about the licensure process. Next, we're using a form system currently. Talk about change in customer service. We are trying to go away from this form structure. Our new application system, when it's done, it will ask a series of questions and kind of guide the, the person, kind of like our surveys, it's going to be very similar, and guide them to what they actually need to submit in order to do whatever licensing action, instead of these forms with all the different requirements. And hopefully, it'll be easier to understand and less cumbersome for the applicant. We do have our, our class system. So right now, we're operating out of two licensure system. The legacy system is called License Applications. We're trying to do away with that, but we do have a certain amount of applications that are still in that system that we're working to migrate into our new platform class. But once this new platform is finished, it's very modern, very easy to use, and it's going to have a lot of bells and whistles that are going to be beneficial for our applicants in the licensure process. The license, once a license is issued, they're notified by email that they're, they can print their license, and they go to the educator license lookup to do that. This is a public site, so if an individual, if you wanted to check on a status of some educator in your district or one of your regions, or one of your districts, you could go here and do a search, you can do a name search. Or every year, we collect the license personnel report. So on or around March 17th of a given year, the license personnel report data gets fed into the educator license lookup, so you can do a search by district, and it'll pull up all the teachers who were licensed in that area. In addition, there is a, if you click on the educator credential for a particular individual, it'll show their license history, and then the application status down at the bottom. An individual can go and check and see if their application is processing or what's going on. There's only three statuses. Not active, means they have a valid license. There's nothing, an application processing. There's a second of processing. That means they have submitted some type of application or pending background check. And finally, there's expired. That means they may have held a Kansas license and it expired. So in addition to our team having access to our license application system, our districts in the field have access. Our districts will verify experience for some of our applications, verify employment assignment record, and upload certain documents, such as professional development transcripts, and submit that to us, which all this has been very important back in, you know, three, four years ago. Our Form 3, our professional license, was still being mailed in, and that's about 6,000, 7,000 applications a year that were being touched by hands and filed. We now can do that online, just as pretty much 90% of our applications at this point, which has spread up, sped up the process. Our universities also have access. They verify program completion, verify that recency we discussed early, testing scores, which we can also verify testing scores, because we have accounts with ETS, but so do the universities. They verify GPA and work sample completion for their programs. The second part I wanted to talk to you real quickly was about the fingerprint background check processing. That's our large, our second largest area of, you know, actually processing things. Why we're authorized to do that, we have, we're checked by the FBI and KBI for audits, you know, every few years, which we were actually audited by FBI last year, and then this year by KBI, which we passed with no deficiencies. The, but anyway, the Adam Walsh Act is what authorizes us to get access to criminal history record information, and how that information is actually received. An individual will go, they'll get a fingerprint card, have their fingerprints taken, it's sent to us, then we send it over to the KBI. They do that clearance check and get enrolled and rat back, and then that information is transmitted via their K-Chat system that's listed here. So we're doing a lot more automation to speed this process up, but the live scan listing that you have here, it's a KBI system that not all local law enforcement agencies are utilizing, so we're still kind of stuck in kind of that, go get your prints taken and mailed into our office. But eventually, it's more entities, law enforcement agencies pick up that live scan. Our process should improve as well and get a lot faster. But once we have a fingerprint card, it takes about five days, anywhere from three days, three to five days, to get that clearance back and get that individual cleared. Oh, well, already listed on there, 24 to 72, well. Yeah, 72 is pretty much the magic number. Rat back, so a lot of our fees, you just approved on the consent agenda, our fee structure, free fee structure, and part of that is the rat back process. We are charged annually, every year, for people to be enrolled in that system. So if you ever get a call about why we're requesting a fingerprint card for somebody whose license expired, that's why we have to get them enrolled, because once a license expires, we disenroll them, because we get charged for that. And if we don't have that fee, we can't cover that cost. And I mentioned K-Chat, and then if there's ever anything that shows up in criminal record history, then we coordinate with general counsel, and they're, they review that person's history as well. So in a given year, said 8,000, we're probably trending more towards 8,500 this year. There's approximately every year, 1,000 educators that go through that legal process to be reviewed. And then, out of that 1,000, there are usually, or somewhere around 30, 30 or so that actually have to go through our Professional Practices Commission for review. And pending your questions. 15 minutes over.
Ah, you're, it's not that bad.
And nobody fell asleep, so.
Dennis.
Well, thank you, Shane. Just wondering if there's any, going back to the testing stuff, is there any discussion about lengthening the time that somebody can retest or whatever? And, and the cost? Betty made some comments about that. Is there any conversation about that?
Yeah, so both of those items would, you know, have to go through ETS in order to adjust their system and adjust what they would want to charge. So I'm personally not having that conversation with ETS at the moment. Now, as far as the test duration piece, ETS has been working on that in order to get test scores. So the big limitation about the, the waiting period is when they take a test, they have to wait for the score results to get completed for that test they just took to see if they passed or not. It takes about 14 to 21 days to, for those score results to post, which is an improvement. It used to be about 30. So they are working on that. But it's a very important process that it goes through as they're waiting on the scoring. You may hear about bias as far as testing. It goes through a process where it's checked to identify any question bias in that particular test. And if it is identified that that is an issue, that, that question is removed, and that person gets credit for answering that question correctly. So it does take a little time for that process to happen.
Okay, I, I just wondered if, you know, if there's, I know there are situations where teachers are losing, like maybe capers or something, because they can't complete it. I mean, that's, you know, and, and they're having to go look, they're actually leaving the field or have to leave the field because of.
So from the, from the licensure, their, their question would actually be more towards the license if it's going to change, because we offer that one-year non-renewable? So yes, there has been, there have been discussions about that. And next month, as part of the license personnel report, the plan is, as long as it gets through the Professional Standards Board, there are some recommendations as far as testing that'll be coming your way for review.
Okay, good.
And that would impact that particular population.
Good, good, I'm glad to hear that.
Emma.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shane, can you remind me again, how, what is the limit right now for an emergency and a regular sub to stay in one spot?
Yes, so it, it did change with KISA regulations, but it has changed. It used to be, well, I'll just go with what it is. So if they have a bachelor's degree for emergency substitute license, it's 45 days in the same assignment, and there's no restrictions if they're moving through different classrooms, so they can serve as often as they want.
Okay.
If an individual has a 60 college credit hours but not a bachelor's degree, the limitation is 25 days in the same assignment, and they're limited to 75 days in, just in the district in general for a semester.
Oh, okay. And that's longer than it used to be, right?
It is, so everything with the KISA update, the, the regulations that were approved for KISA, I want to say maybe that was October 2021 or 2022. Those were adjusted, and a, a few additional days were tacked on for that, for those sub licenses.
And that's not temporary, that's.
That's, no, that is, yeah, so all of our licenses have changed, and they now list that on there.
Are you having any luck getting the Teacher Vacancy Committee together?
So as part of the Professional Standards Board question at this moment, no. But I will have more information and an update for you next month.
Okay. Now, the Professional Standards Board looks at all this stuff, what tests you have to take. So if you find this work interesting, you want to sit in for me next Friday, you can let me know. But I know we are looking at eliminating the pedagogy test in favor of a portfolio, because as it turns out, everybody who goes through a teaching program has to do a portfolio. Is that the right term, portfolio, anyway? But anyway, it's something we're considering. But I found it interesting talking to ETS, was that, yeah, last time we met, about when we, the Professional Standards Board recommended a couple changes that we did approve in May. But I noticed, and it was the teachers that brought this up, like, okay, now we've made this test shorter and more objective, you're going to lower the cost? And they're going, oh, we hadn't thought about that. And we're going, yeah, you should think about that, because this is just way expensive. But is portfolio the right term, or?
Yeah, so what we call it is a, a work sample, a student work sample. But yes, that's exactly what it is. And I, I just like to caution, we, we haven't finalized what our recommendations are, so.
Right, there's a lot of things to think about, but it's on the table.
We are, we are looking at testing as a whole, content and pedagogy, but I don't want to speak for the, the Standards Board yet, as far as where they're going.
Thank you.
I don't see any more questions. I want to thank you for your time. And speaking of time, I would like to suggest that maybe next month, when you come back, we, we give you some extra time, because there are a lot of questions, as you saw today, that kind of span typically outside of what's covered in the PowerPoint, so.
Sure.
Really appreciate it.
And I will let you know, I have the license personnel report next month, so you may not want to hear from me for a while after that, because that will be a longer presentation, so.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We will transition to Beth Foltz and David Fernkopf to act on updated ELA standards.
Lori coming? Okay, okay. Good morning. My name's Dr. David Fernkopf. You might remember me from yesterday. And with me, I have Dr. Lori Curtis, one of our program managers. And I'm going to be going over the 2023 ELA standards. And last month, we went over the changes for the ELA standards and the changes we were hoping to go over, so this is going to be a follow-up. And in your packet, you have the red line changes. And so I have a few things we're going to go. go over today. So if you recall, last month, we had Joanne McCrell here, she was double booked, so I'm going to be doing the speaking today. So last month, they proposed all the changes that they were going to be putting through, and after those changes, we had to put the proposed changes up for, to the public to see what the thoughts were about the, the changes. So how did we do that? So we had the two public hearings via Zoom, one was on May twenty-fifth and one was on June first, and we had, we did have a limited turnout to the hearings, but we had guests that included both teachers, building leaders, district leaders, and we did have a state board member, thank you, Dennis, for showing up, appreciate that. And with the feedback, mainly the type of feedback we received included wanting some crosswalks, that crosswalk meaning wanting to know that what type of changes were made from what was currently in the standards to what standards are including now. So with that feedback, we also had the feedback published on, online, and online, the, this little picture, that's what was on the banner, and the people that were online, they could click on the little banner and they could give type their own thoughts and opinions on the feedback and give us the feedback that we could then actually read their comments. And we had a group of staff here on, be able to read the feedback and check to see if the feedback was valid, valid feedback that we should make changes on the standards based upon their feedback. And so we were able to go through that feedback. And not only did we have this posted on the website, we also posted on our Twitter, on Facebook, and we also published it in the KSD Weekly, so we were trying to make sure we were hitting people in multiple ways, so it wasn't just published in one area. So trying to make sure that it was multiple areas so that if a person had an opinion, they had an opportunity to make sure that we heard their opinion. With that, we had forty-two written comments submitted by twenty-nine individuals, so some people had things to say, recognizing that there are forty-two written comments with only twenty-nine people. That included principals, reading specialists, at-risk, individual, individual, intervinist teachers and TASN coordinators. The written comments, like I said, were gone over by the staff and edits were made, made on the documents. And the, the packets that you had ahead of time, that's what was the red, and if you, when you flip through there, you're going to notice there are a lot of sections that there weren't changes made. So it wasn't a lot of changes that were made, you're going to notice a lot of changes in the kindergarten through the second grade area, and then towards the older grades, there were some changes. With, with that being said, what Lori and Beth passed out is the final pack, the final standards, and there won't be anything red in there because those are the final standards that we're going to be asking for approval here when the presentation is done after questions. So they clear, what are we going to do now? What's the thought process? Because, you know, we do have some of the feedback is educators are wanting some clarification, right? So a clarification document is going to be posted on the KSD website before the start of the school year because there are educators that still want to have some, some feedback about the changes. So we're going to be working on with the ELA team to make sure there's clarification on the changes. And then we're also going to be having the ELA team develop some professional development to make sure that that is available for people that have questions, and that will be available both in-person and virtual that we can offer across the state to make sure that if there are questions, that those questions can be answered because we want to make sure that the changes are understood. It's important that they are able to understand the changes that are made. So with that being said, I want to make sure I can answer the questions, and we have Dr. Curtis here also to entertain any of the questions that you might have.
Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do these changes have such an impact as it would literally mess up the curriculum that districts already have in place? Like, would it cause them to literally have to buy new curriculum at this point to meet these standards?
Go ahead, Dr. Curtis.
These chan, changes aren't new, it's supposed, I mean, it involves the structured literacy implementation, so they've known this is coming, so it shouldn't change what they already have in place or should be getting in place.
I think the key to that, Kathy, or should be getting in place, because most school districts will be on some kind of cyclical, so seven years, five years, and that's because of cost of adoption, but they have known they have to move from what they had if they did not have a structured literacy curriculum, that they were, they should be in the process of adopting a new one. So you still may find people that have not done that, correct, Lori? But that's not, yeah, so will this force it? Yes, but so did the dyslexia task force recommendation start that process. Is that helpful? Okay.
Ann.
Yeah, I think my question was answered. We're really just implementing into the standard structured literacy, right? So, yeah, we hope it changes the curriculum, and that's a good thing. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that.
Dennis.
Yeah, thank you for this work. I'm, I'm just glad we're getting back to phonics. I think I'm understanding that that's kind of the direction we're going, right? You know, thirty-five, forty years ago, that's, that's what we encouraged at home, and so I'm, I'm glad to see this, and so thank you for moving that direction. I just want to mention I have a, a really iconic picture at home of, in my office, of a, of a mother probably from, from the late eighteen hundreds, sitting in a, in a chair reading to her two-year-old, and I, I just, that just warms my heart.
Mormon fuzzies, again. I heard it down there. All right. I don't see any other questions. Now would be a great time for a motion. Ann?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the updated ELA standards.
Do I have a second? Jim Porter? All in, any more discussion, questions? All in favor, raise your hand. That is a ten-oh vote. Motion passes. Yes.
Thank you, everyone, but I want to point this out, and I was thinking about this through a lot of presentations this morning, you're seeing now the work of structured literacy going to the standards, but that work started with the dyslexia task force several years ago, and sometimes when it comes at you this way, it seems disjointed, right? Where's this, why are we doing the standards? It's because that laid the groundwork for what this has to work. What Ben and the team was talking about earlier is now making sure that that is actually happening in the schools, and what is the accountability measures, and what's the process, and what's the training that has to go in to make sure it's not just compliance? Yeah, we're doing it. No, we're really committed to doing it. So I just, sometimes I think, but because you hear things different months, different years, it's hard sometimes, when you don't live it, to connect the dots. So I just wanted to point that out.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Next, we are going to welcome Shane Carter back. We missed you.
You're almost done with me for the day. Getting old part, it's tough. I think I may have a problem.
Well, it's impossible.
Don't worry. All right, so today, we're going to go through the apprenticeship, mentorship, professional collaboration with KNA that the licensure, licensure team is going through the planning process of as we look for sustainable solutions to fund our registered teacher apprenticeship program. You know, before we get started, I would like to thank KNA because they've been active in this process as we've gone through and created or we're looking at starting a registered apprenticeship program. They've been part of that conversation and have been a, a great partner as we've moved through this, implementing this new program in the state of Kansas. So before we get into the actual, a, a little more about the, the grants that we're looking to apply for, I wanted to quickly go through and kind of rehash the definition of registered apprenticeship so we can make that distinction. We just had that conversation about limited apprentice licenses and how it's not actually an apprenticeship program, but this is the federally registered apprenticeship program that we're discussing now. And for us in Kansas, that creates this national, or national, creates a partnership between us and Department of Commerce as the registered apprenticeship is kind of housed in, in Kansas in the Department of Commerce Office of Apprenticeships. All right, to cover a few things about the registered apprenticeship, what's important, some of those main requirements, number one is that apprentice-on-the-job learning. So an individual serving in that position as a apprentice, it's kind of a space between a paraprofessional and a teacher, and during that process, those blue bulleted items, that's really what we're talking about here. There are, there is a teacher that's assigned to work with that individual as they're going through and completing that on-the-job learning, that's there to evaluate, instruct, provide guidance, and that's kind of the crux of sustaining the program. We want to make sure that those educators are paid and their time is valued and their support that they're given, that they, they receive some type of compensation for that. So as we're going through the program requirements, and where we're trying to look at funding options, teacher stipends for these individ, or stipends to pay these individuals to serve in that mentorship role is one of the key areas that the licensure team wanted to make sure that we found funds to do that. So that teacher will continue to help that person learn and master teaching competencies, which were established in the, the keep-two system, and, you know, complete and do that review and, and serve in the system as they go through it. Also, a requirement for the registered apprenticeship is the required technical instruction, which is done through the university, so a little different training. So funding of the program, so we went through this last month, as far as what we're offering right now for our pilot, we are using gear, gear funds to fund the pilot, and part of that pilot funding, we have set aside fifteen hundred dollars for not only the mentor teacher that's in the district to, to receive funds, but also we're implementing or incorporating K toy mentors into this process as well and looking to establish a K toy teacher academy type event that will take place in the summer, and we want to make sure our K toy folks receive compensation for that as well. But the funding for the gear two money will run out September of twenty-twenty-four, and technically we won't be able to use it after the summer semester of twenty-twenty-four. As far as the Kansas Apprenticeship Act, House Bill twenty-two ninety-two, formerly, it set aside three million per year, that's going to start on July first of twenty-twenty-three. However, that money is limited strictly to tuition, and it's capped at twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars per individual in, in any given year just to pay for that tuition. As we start looking at the cost, the energy, and who all is involved in this process to train these educators, future educators, you know, that three million dollars in order to fund a sustainable program, it's kind of missing the target, and if we don't adjust and address some of the other requirements for this program and get those funded as well, then this program, it, it's not going to be sustainable, and we have a, we'll, we'll lose an opportunity to find another path to the classroom for individuals that are interested in teaching. So in addition to this, the KNA partnership grant that we're looking to apply for, we have in coordination with the Department of Commerce, applied for a USDOL grant, which is, which Department of Commerce has allotted us up to three million dollars if it is approved. Now, there are fund, there is funding that we're looking to set aside out of that as well, to cover that mentorship as well, but nothing's guaranteed. We have no guaranteed money right now, other than the gear money and that twenty-seven fifty that'll start July first of twenty-twenty-three. So we're trying to look at any avenue we can to identify funding sources. So when we talk about tuition, we get the twenty-seven fifty, there are a lot of options out there that we're going to try to incorporate in this program that's going to pay for the tuition, but, you know, as I mentioned, there's other, other costs that are associated with this for the district and for those mentor teachers that will not be covered, and there's no funding source whatsoever for them. So as far as this KNA partnership grant, it's actually two grants. One is a ten thousand dollar planning grant, so that would be if we submitted that and were approved, that would help us create an opportunity to actually apply for the Great Public Schools Grant, and annually that has a maximum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that could go into our program, and that's a maximum, that doesn't mean that, you know, you'd automatically qualify for that amount, but there could be some type of financial support in there for us. So for us, for the teacher licensure team, identifying a way to sustain this program is our number one priority because if not, we've already got the program established, we'll continue to monitor that, but if we can't make it sustainable, then it's just going to go away, and it'll just be another failed initiative. So as I said, funds are going to be used to, to pay mentor teachers and also our K toy mentor teachers as well, and, you know, through this process, we talk about the work that we've done in divisional, divisional learning services. If we look at our four fundamentals, you know, structured literacy, balanced assessment, high-quality instruction, and standards aligned, there has to be not only an opportunity for professional learning for the field to work on that, and that directly impacts licensure, but also mentoring. Mentoring is a requirement for licensure, so we have to relook and improve our mentoring plans and our mentoring programs and have a better way to evaluate them. So to that point, KNA has operated a mentor training pilot with the Lansing School District, and they've also partnered with Emporia to offer the mentor training as well, and one of the great things about their training is they have a good evaluation process that goes throughout as those mentors are trained, and, you know, that is an area of improvement we, as a whole, in the licensure team, need to, need to correct. So they're already doing some of that work. So I'll take a moment, very short presentation, I just wanted to update you on what exactly that money would be used for.
So I'll start by asking a question. If I were an educator, why would I want to be a mentor? Why would I not want to be a mentor? What, what are we up against here?
Yeah, well, if you think about the teaching profession as a whole, I think of it as military, it's a selfless service, and you're, you're looking to improve not only your students, your peers around you to overall, you know, have a success. So why would an individual want to be a mentor teacher? It gives them the opportunity to work with that individual, to ensure that they're passing on those skills that they have and those abilities, to make sure that that, that new teacher has the ability to impact student's success and provide the best instruction, and it benefits the district and makes the district the best it can be. So, I, I mean, it's kind of that area, and then when we think of, you know, the science as far as, you know, career progression and keeping people in any position, in, in any field, that mentoring, that one-to-one connection that an individual has and has the opportunity to ask questions or ask for guidance or get feedback on how they're doing in, in a particular area, it's, it's key to keeping retention in that area.
Okay, and real quick, the other part of that, why would I maybe not want to be a mentor?
Yeah, well, we all have our different skill sets, you know, not everyone is high on interpersonal, interpersonal skills, if you will, and some people just aren't cut out for it. So it requires a lot of patience, a lot of one-on-one time and listening and, and working with an individual, so that, that would be a reason why a person wouldn't want to be a mentor teacher, or they just simply don't have time based on whatever they have outside of the profession of, you know, with family or hobbies, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like that training would be key. Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it sounds like to me, when we voted on this last month, it was a ten-zero vote, the, the money and the funding, it's an, it's, it was HB twenty-two ninety-two.
Two ninety-two, yes, ma'am.
Okay, with, I was under assumption it was funded. It was funded. It doesn't sound like, it sounds like it was passed without considering all the funds, all this money that's going to be costs involved in that, and then the upkeep of that, and then to expand it if districts, so some districts may be able to afford it, others may not. That's going to be a local, that's definitely going to be a local issue, but it sounds like it could just go away, so we thought it's law, we have to just pass it because they're, they've passed it into law, so we have to just do this and comply. Well, you can't comply if you don't have the money to do it, so it doesn't sound like it was funded at all.
Yeah, so, well, as I said, there are, the three million dollars is there, there are, so right now, a lot of the responsibility goes on to the district to provide, there's wage progression that's involved in this program, they would have to pay for that individual. So originally, we thought when this was going to get allotted, we were going to have money to help, you know, offset that cost as well, but that wasn't there, and we, you know, we assumed we could use money to pay for our, our mentor teachers as well. But that's not all hopes lost. We can still make this a valuable program, it's, there are funding sources out there, and I feel that's our responsibility as teacher licensure to go out and find those. But even if, let's say, the minimum amount of funding we get is geared towards tuition, there are ways that we can still try, strive to make this a successful program, and, you know, my hope is we could, we would be successful, but it, it would take a little more work on the district, and when I say work, also compensate money for that district to pay and chip in.
Yeah, I just wished it would have all been brought last, you know, to us last month so we had a, a purview of what was going on. I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that I would have voted for that. I would have voted, even though the legislature did their thing and passed it without thinking, you mean, I mean, maybe they thought through it, they didn't think through it, I don't know. I mean, maybe they thought through it, they didn't think through it, I don't know. That's beside the point, but it's, it's just feels like, I don't know, we didn't get the, we didn't get all, we didn't get the full picture when we voted on that last month.
So the unique thing about this program, we were already working on trying to establish and determine if this was, you know, the right route for, for Kansas to move and, you know, all of our partners, yes. So we were, we were working on this. But it all changed when it was taken up by the legislators and then they, they approved House Bill 2292. Now it is a requirement, so we have to figure this out.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Wasn't this apprenticeship scheduled for two years and to, as a trial as a pilot?
No, so our, well, our pilot, we're in our first year of the pilot and the pilot that, well, we will be. We're about to finalize our districts that are going to start participating in this. But as far as when we're thinking of pilot, it's more of working out our administrative processes to open up this statewide. So by this time next year, we would look to have this open and available statewide. But the actual program, it is right now a four-year competency-based program. So individuals, depending on their background, education history, and work experience, could spend up to four years in this program to become licensed.
Well, you know, I would be much more comfortable seeing how it works out over a year. I mean, it seems like we ought to, whenever you start a pilot program, it seems like there ought to be a time of evaluation and see if it's working before we start throwing money at it. And honestly, I'm not comfortable with pardoning with NEA because they're not really, they're outside of KSDE. I mean, you know, they're, and so I'm not sure why we would not want to look at how it worked out this first year, have an evaluation, then come back. I mean, if this first year is funded, isn't that right?
Yes, which teacher licensure is funding. So part of the requirement for House Bill 2292 is we have to go back to the legislature after a two-year, I think March of 2026, and provide them update about our program and basically what has worked or what hasn't. So through that pilot process, we're going to establish that and say, look, for this to be successful, we received, you know, we were paying mentors and for us to continue this program, you know, from our viewpoint, we're going to address all these things as measurables of what we actually need to make this, this program to continue to be a success in Kansas. So that's, that'll be part of it.
So really, why are we talking about four years? I mean, if we're looking at a year to see if it's successful, why can't we come back next year and, and ask and talk about funding then going forward? If, you know, it just, this bothers me that we have, that we have this, like Michelle said, this projection, you know, ahead of what we didn't vote on last month. And so I, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with this.
So the, so the difficult space that we're operating in is, you know, for this pilot, for an actual cohort group to make it through the full program, we're looking at four years. So if we wanted to wait and do that whole evaluation for that four years, I think we're missing an opportunity. That's why we wanted to try to limit the pilot to a year, see how administratively everything's running. And then if, if we, if we have some funding, we expect, hopefully, well, I expect that we'll qualify for that Department of Labor grant that will be available in October. We should find out shortly. And then, you know, that takes care of our, our, some of our funding issues. And so that's going to make the program much easier to operate.
Is, is that going to come back to us in the next month or two then to agree? Is this going to be an action item to actually agree with the granting?
No, because I think it goes, it'll be through the Department of Commerce and the Department of Commerce is awarding that to us. That's my assumption, but.
So really, the future of this program, so really, the future of this program isn't up to us?
Well, yes and no. It is, we, we have a requirement. So we physically, we are operating in the program. We're not necessarily covering all the funding and there's, we're responsible to report to Department of Commerce for certain items throughout this program. So it, we have to be intertwined with them. But as far as how that program's set up, what we're actually requiring as far as teacher competencies and that RTI instruction and setting that wage progression, that's all decisions we get to make. But a lot of the funds right now, that $2,750 that is allotted to an individual for tuition, we'll not vote on that, we'll not touch that. That money will come directly from Department of Commerce to that individual.
Okay, I think we understood that. And it's, I mean, I, you know, what we voted on last month seemed to be just to initiate a pilot program and that that was funded. So to be adding all this stuff on makes me think, well, why are we even involved? You know, so that's where I'm at. I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of frustrated with being tied into something that we don't have any skin in the game going forward. That's, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Got a couple more questions here. Michelle?
So just a follow-up question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a follow-up question. So I see the NEA, whenever you get a grant money in coming in from federal or NEA, you're going to have, you're going to have strings attached to that, you're going to have compliances, they're going to want certain things because they're giving you that money, correct? So that's where it gets a little bit away from Kansas and it gets away from things that are going on with Kansas because they're going to have demands on us that we may not, as Kansans, may not agree with. So I just want to, I just want to throw that out there as far as when we start trying to get money from different, different places for something that may not, may or not be fully funded, I start to question like outside sources out of, out of Washington, out of, far away from where the, the local community has, has involvement and has a say in what's going on with those apprenticeships. Because obviously with anything with, you're getting into labor, away from education and getting to labor, that constantly changes and it's very expensive. I mean, the demand and we, we can't even keep up with what's going on with technology and everything like that in the schools. And now we're taxpayers and we're paying for that when it's constantly changing. When if you have a business out there, you pay for that training, you pay for the, the updates, you pay for all that. Now we're starting to get more labor into education and mixing the two together. And, and we're getting further away from Kansas and into Washington, get back to Washington DC and federal and NEA. And that makes me a little nervous.
Now, I would like to point out again that Kansas is a state apprenticeship agency. So a lot of that authority as far as funding that it's released goes to our Department of Commerce and they would be the individual that would make the decision, that would conduct those audits and determine how, you know, that money is used and what it can go for. So we do have that, that representation here of the state. So it's not coming directly from Department of Labor.
Okay.
For audits.
Tim Porter?
I have an alternative position. We have a teacher shortage and we need to do everything we can. This is not the answer, but it is part of the solution. I think we ought to take every possible opportunity to partnership with whoever will help us and we need to look at other areas. So I think the crisis is now, the crisis needs to be addressed now. This is a way to address part of it. I fully support this and would fully support us making efforts to look at other opportunities for partnerships because we need people. We need people in the classroom, we need people in the classroom. Now, I was visiting just this week with a teacher that couldn't finish her student teaching because she has to work. And that's all that's left. And we need to do everything we can to help people get in the classroom.
Kathy, sorry, did you want to respond?
May I make one comment, Madam Chair? So also wanted to throw out again, you know, kind of long-term, so this, on the short-term, the pilot was still more for us as a licensure team, very small team to get organized and get all this together. When we start looking at the, at that long-term apprenticeship program, we're looking at incorporating a youth apprenticeship program into the adult apprenticeship. So we're capturing those students that have an interest in teaching at the high school level. They're going to earn college credits, they'll complete that youth apprenticeship, transition into our adult apprenticeship and set up in a way that they've earned in college credits throughout high school and then that district's invested in them already. And then in a couple of years, they come back and teach in that district. And it's trying to provide a, basically a tuition-paid working opportunity for those individuals that participate in the program to finish and become a teacher. And then I think long-term, that is valuing the profession.
Kathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to piggyback on what Board Member Dombrowski said about the NEA part of this on the national scheme. And while the statement I'm going to read comes out of Colorado, they all come from the national part of this and it's a great concern to me. The CEA, so the Colorado Education Association, believes that capitalism requires exploitation of children, public schools, land, labor, and/or resources. And I'm just going to put that out there.
Ann Ma?
Well, I'd just like to say more than half of our teachers are KNEA members. I can't think of a finer group of people to work with to mentor our new apprentices. Thank you.
Deana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a member of KNEA for many, many years, yes, sir, and I have been to the national conference and lots of things were said and done that I did not agree with. But in the end, it was a vote of thousands of attendees that made decisions. And most of them you would agree with. There is an arm of NEA that's been there for the beginning, probably the beginning of the organization, that it's research. Has nothing to do with the politics. And much of what has been found over the years in education, there's a stream of that that's been connected to NEA. So they're not totally bad. We can disagree with some of their positions. But this is one where they're trying to help with the issues that all states are having with achieving some sort of, of... Anyway, they're trying to make certain that schools are, are... That people that know what they're doing with teaching are there for our kids in schools. And I don't think we can argue with that part. And as Mr. Porter pointed out, we need the help wherever we can find it. And it just seems to me that sometimes we allow our, our disagreements with an organization to get in the way of seeing the good that they're trying to do. So I, I think we, yes, should monitor and know what's happening. But it's a grant. And if KNEA is involved, I would guess they have limits in how that money can be used. And there's special specifics that have been put together. And that I would suspect if we saw what the grant has been given, the money that's been given for, we would agree with it. So I am fine with, with us, not just because I'm a member, but I like to see my money, my membership money being used for good things that I agree with too. So thank you.
Danny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure I get on the record, I'm not going to partner with NEA for anything. That's, that's where I stand and never will. When that organization has no place in anything you can find that says we're going to do what's best for kids, I got a problem. And that's where that organization is, I have research, research, research. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions or comments. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Appreciate it. Board members, we have reached the end of our agenda. We will adjourn until next month. Thank you all for your... We do have superintendents here. Apologies. All the new superintendent are out there in the hallway, so please hang around, meet them, stay for conversation. And yes, there's a list in your packet. We have, I counted 57 on the list. Does that sound right? 34 here. All right. Welcome, everyone, and we are adjourned until next month.